Test, test, test?
All right, the time is five oh five P M. I'm calling to order a work session of the City Council of the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And just as a note, Councilmember Johnson will not be attending tonight's work session or agenda or a regular council meeting, and we're hoping that Councilmember Rosengarden can join the work session while it's in progress. We'll begin with the work session with public comments. As a note, the work session where public comments are available during the beginning of the work session, we're not taking any action tonight. This is a discussion and direction to staff for possible future agenda items that we may bring back. But with that, we'll open it up for members of the public that wish to speak at this time.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and staff, because this was an extraordinary amount of work that you guys have. Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council and staff, because this was an incredible amount of work that people did in the backup, and I certainly appreciate it. The, and I also appreciate y'all's bravery taking this on, because one of the things that people have been avoiding for a long time is dealing with this issue. So yay, y'all. I, I hope that there's follow-through, and I hope that there's significant follow-through, because before, when we tackled this issue, people didn't want to do it. And so we said, well, we'll have this incremental approach when we last tackled it. And no, and the follow-through just doesn't happen, and that's how we end up. So we're really going to have to do a fix in this council if we're going to do it, because to say we're going to significantly do this later doesn't bind future councils, and it doesn't get fixed. And then we end up in the hot water that we currently are in. So to go back to the last time we did this, the previous city administrator tapped me on the shoulder and, and used me to move this through finance way back when. And, and at that point, council decided and finance recommended that we keep things at a $500,000 cap, because that way it was a sustainable subsidy that we could afford. And now I'm seeing a doubling, and I'm like, how did we get here when we put things in place where we were not going to get from 500,000 to a million? And while I appreciate staff's work on this, I still don't see the numbers adding up to, to where that really is. I still see the numbers not making sense to me. So I still think that what we need to do is have a T R, Texas Rural Water Association Free Assessment, because if we do that, then we will at least see what, what their analysis of the staffing is, and, and we'll have something that we could base our figures on. Miguel Huerta will argue that we should pay for this, so that it'll be defensible in court. I, I would start with the free one, myself. So how did we get to, from the 500 K cap that we agreed to, to this? And, and, and we agreed that we would pass on any incremental costs. How did that happen, that we didn't do that? These are the questions that are in my mind. I think we need to have tiers that are closer to Austin's, so that we can address this better. When Councilmember Foltz was there, he, he said that, Garmona, he said that he, that that was a, a good idea, and I, and I think that that has some merit. I think that will also encourage conservation. I ju, I, I think that the things that don't make sense to me in the numbers are the staffing numbers. The congressional cost, not getting costs passed along, it's a question, and, and we need to see how we do that, but we did agree to do that. And the only one that wasn't true defensively was what the, the previous mayor did, because it wasn't technically a staffing thing, it was an increase in services. But that's still miniscule compared to the water and the wastewater. I'm happy to answer any other questions people want me to, but thank you so much for your time and effort.
Thank you. Please go ahead and step into the podium. It's good to see you, former Councilmember Carmona.
Thank you. First, I was surprised when I came and I saw how nice looks this building. The floor, the air, you can smell, and smell with more pure quality of air. And sometimes when you are here, you don't see that, because you came and you are doing that. But now I came and I saw the enter, and I used to love that chairs, but, but it looks good. So congratulations, the floor. Okay, well, when I was reading about the water and wastewater or utilities, for this town, it's very top subject. The last study that they made was in two thousand and fourteen. So that was an excellent study. This is real, real professional study. You have to do that almost every five years, so in that way you have some idea. With the old administrator, I, I used to be talking, and I say, perhaps we can, we can modify, we can start feeding the new numbers and, and continue with that. And I think that that was, was a good idea, but we had problems, because some people, they like it, some people they don't like, and, and the reality, nobody wants to pay. And that, that's a fact. And when we tried to justify it, that was the, the, the problem. Now, when I saw this, this, this information that they presented, with that information, they copied part of the project from two thousand and fourteen. Also, they copied the blue forms that they were. This is not bad, but it's incomplete. So that, that report that you will see today doesn't have all the needs to be. This is one line. The other line is, this place was unique, because as, as they mentioned, each time then finance, the committee, or other committees, they decide about, we will, we will increase or no increase, or we will do this, or we will do that. So the system is, is a patchy, patchy system. So if you have, because I made that study two years ago, two hundred and forty-six people at that time, and I remember that over twenty-seven people, they didn't pay water, because they were less than three thousand. So how you can pay for the job that they are doing, for all operation and maintenance, if you don't charge, for say, that people? The rates, the rates for the city of Austin, when, when you use over eleven thousand gallons, you pay twenty-nine dollars per thousand gallons, twenty-nine. So the rates, they don't have proportion, so it's something that we have to be very careful. The other is the wastewater. The wastewater, if you, you don't use too much water during the, the, the winter, so you don't pay. So you, you cannot have one system that you don't pay or you pay. So the first thing is, we need to look at this moment, the realities that we have. So if you say, well, these people, they are saving water, it's less than three thousand. Yeah, but the city of Austin, if you use three thousand gallons, you have to pay also, because that pays for a lot of things, operation and maintenance. So if they are using over two thousand gallons, they pay three dollars with fifty-five cents. So they have to pay. They have some areas where, if you have people, then they prove that they cannot pay, they have ways how you can adjust. So the first thing that, when I saw this, and I, I, I told them before, was working with tiers. The tiers is how much water they are using. So you have groups. So zero to two thousand, two thousand one to six thousand, et cetera. So you have that groups. When you have that groups, you feed your customers, and after that, you say how much money they can pay. Now, in, in, in our case, when we say, well, the, the, the commercial, they, they don't have any subsidy, they, they are free, no, because they pay for the five seventy-one, but they don't pay the over, that is, operation, maintenance, and other kind of things. And in this city, if you see water and wastewater, if I remember, water was in the order of six hundred thousand dollars, but the operation and maintenance go over three hundred thousand dollars. So look that. So this is something that we're not watching. So my suggestion at, at this moment is, I think that you have the newsletter, and in the newsletter, we have to send to the public some points. What is the reality? How is our system? But we need to be with some transparency. We don't need to cover nothing. And in that way, the city sends, when that will be October, November, December, if you need to take some decision, you have some education in the people. Not to fill up this pain place to say, nah, nah, we don't want to pay for water. No, we prove how that is working. So that, that, that I, I think is critical. Now, if we say it's professional, yes, use that forms. The forms from the city of Austin, they are so, so easy to follow, and our study for two thousand and fourteen was incredible. So my advisor, because this is a topic that will be bad, if some people, they want to take it that way. We know that we came to a corner, so in one moment, somebody has to pay. And it's soon or later, but now we are sooner. So be, because we're in that way, I suggest that we need to, to organize the, the public board director, or with somebody there. If this takes a rural water, or orders for water than we have, and some citizens, if, and I, I, I try to be with them. And if we work together, we can present something to you, and little by little, drop by drop, to the public. So I think that will be much better in that way. Today, you will have numbers, but I, 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 I am, I don't support that. I am not sure exactly how they came with that, but I don't believe that that is the best way or the best approach in this city. Again, thank you very much, and I would like to continue working with some details as they are. Thank you.
Okay. I want to apologize first off to Matt for not getting a card when I got here, and so we didn't. I'm going to be the time balancer, okay? This is just going to be quick. This is a very hard topic. Every time we, we approach it in the Budget Committee, it's not easy. What we remind ourselves is what a subsidy actually is. A subsidy is when a public, a public, a public entity decides to give help in lowering the price of a commodity or a service. For instance, the federal government has all kinds of subsidies if you're a commodity, you grow sorghum, there's a commodity for that, there's a subsidy for that. So just to remind everybody what it is, it's not welfare, it's not, I hear all kinds of terms batted around, so just, I think it's very important when we approach this, we respect the people who wanted to do this back in the day, and Cherry's talked to me a lot about that. And so I do agree that there needs to be a lot of dissemination of information, because I think a lot of the citizens who live here, the residents, they don't even know there's such a thing as a subsidy, right? They, they just know, wow, we don't pay very much water and, and utilities here in Sunset Valley. So they don't really know the why's and how's. One of the things I don't see in all the information, I think it's very important as you're looking at this topic. If we were living in the city of Austin, we'd be paying our water bills, depending on what neighborhood we live in, in Austin, that would, you know, there's a different rate, it just depends. What I've noticed over the last couple of years, because I've been very active in asking about that, what the city charges us and how, how much it's increased over time. My understanding from talking with Carolyn, the questions I asked at Budget Committee, was that the rate did not increase a whole bunch from Austin, right? So what I've looked at over time is, what is costing us more? Why is it increasing so much? Because our infrastructure, our maintenance, and all those costs associated with employees have increased, they've increased a lot. And so one of the things I think you should maybe look at is look at other similar cities, although there aren't very many in Texas, but there are, who also are pass-throughs for utilities, they don't actually produce them, but they monitor and maintain them. And look at, look at the costs, how much is it costing us per gallon of water or per household, et cetera, in our overhead costs as we, sorry, my drugs are, as we move into this realm? And the other piece is, any kind of change that can be difficult, it's really, I, I know it's very tempting to just whack and say, okay, this is it. But I personally would not like to be an elective official who has a bunch of citizens who open up their water bill overnight, who didn't even know they were getting a subsidy, a lot of them, look at the new numbers. They, they might be a little upset if they don't know what's going on. And yes, they can go on the website, but I would doubt that even more than sixty percent of our citizens really go on our website a lot. It's mostly people like us, you, the electeds, and people who try to stay active in this. So that's just something to think about. And so I appreciate that you gave us time to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If anybody else wishes to speak, do so at this time. All right. And Councilmember Rosengarden, we just got through public comments, so good timing in terms of being able to get the work session. So Council, this is a work session that we've talked about having for a number of months, and in fact, you know, years probably, just in many times. It's the beginning of a process, you know, to look at this. We have a lot of options or avenues for how we, we, we go next or go forward with any direction to staff. The two things that I did want to highlight that in my conversation with staff is that any type of change, we have to make sure there is an engagement process, and that it's not going to take effect before we have that engagement process. And that's going to be something that we control and we can, we can take the time to do. The other is that there has to be some model for what is termed here, a community assistance program for people who need the assistance to pay for any higher water bills, if they're low income, or they're on Medicaid, or, you know, something similar to what other municipalities have, if we go forward with the change. These are, it's a collection of data, it's not to say that we can't go out and get more data, or pursue community engagement with citizens that want to, you know, if we decide that we want to create like an ad hoc committee or something like that to look at this, that's another avenue we can go as well. There is some proposed information in here, which is really more of a beginning of a, you know, this is what it could look like, right? You know, in terms of if we needed to start planning for, for increases, especially in wastewater, where we, we only charge four dollars, right? And then it's everything above ten thousand, which, as members of the public have stated, there is no charge for people who are less than ten thousand dollars, and we, that's where we probably pay our biggest subsidy or transfer from the general fund. We also are looking at making a couple of changes for this year's budgets. One of them is in the budget material that Budget and Finance has been reviewing, which is a redistribution of staff time based on a new analysis, so that it's, it's more accurately reflecting the actual staff time. So there's a slight shift in staff time from the previous years, and that's to try to make sure that we are truly looking at the amount of time that staff is spending on each of the water, or each of the utilities. The other that's, I think is not, that we're going to talk about tonight, is whether we should include the staff time in the solid waste service area at all, right, in terms of that account, because the staff time is really dedicated to the brush cleanup and maintenance of the storage yard, which is not really directly related to the utility, which is the trash service, right? And so that is something that would change our numbers for our budget if we decided to allocate the staff time and the storage yard cost to the general fund instead of the solid waste. And so there would essentially be less of a transfer, because we'd be counting for those in general funds rather than the solid waste, which I think makes sense, and it's something we can discuss as part of our work session tonight, but potentially move forward with in, in terms of the budget. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to staff for the information, or the introduction to this material, and then we'll spend the next thirty-five minutes in discussion before we break and decide how to continue our discussion and engagement with the members of the public. With that, I think Carolyn's going to take over for us.
Yes. So somebody mentioned this is the thing that nobody wants to talk about, it's the kind of elephant in the room that's obviously been eating up quite a bit of money over the years as well. So we'll just get into it, kind of talk about water and wastewater first, and kind of go through the presentation a little ways. So we talk about water supply, water usage, we have what the city of Austin meters us, what we meter customers, and then you have that loss difference. Now, some of this is apparent loss, basically, because it appears that we're losing water versus real loss, where we know there's a water leak, we can kind of determine that information. So I think I included in the backup, talking about how smaller systems, according to the, I think it was Texas Water Development Board, tend to have higher water loss than larger systems, but we have been in the last couple of years trying to keep it down to, you know, under ten percent as far as water loss goes. Then we analyze water usage by customer class, so we used three years of this to get an average, and we're going to be using these numbers throughout most of the analysis here. And so overall, residential usage is about thirty-two percent of water, institutional, which would be the city use, would be about five, commercial, which would be the shopping centers, any of the shopping centers is fifty-two percent, and multifamily is eleven percent. We have to, for Texas Water Development Board, we have to separate commercial and multifamily, but for our analysis, because they pay the same rates, we're going to use a sixty-three percent as the numbers for commercial. And then we took and looked at what residential customers averaged out in those residential, the current tiers that the city has. So about twenty-five customers in the zero to three thousand on average, sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. Hundred and thirty-one are in that three thousand to nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred, nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine range, seventy in that ten thousand gallon, and then about twenty that goes into the over twenty thousand gallons of water per month. And so there are about two hundred and forty-six residential water customers. And on average, when we average out the water use for last year, that residential water use is about nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-three gallons averaged out across the two hundred and forty-six residents. This is important, because when we look back in two thousand and fourteen, residential water use was higher, eleven thousand, some odd gallons per resident, so water use was higher back in two thousand and fourteen, so we've gotten better at water conservation. Where this comes into effect, though, is that if, when we look at those costs per residential customer, nine thousand dollars, nine thousand gallons is the highest subsidized user. So we have more residents than in a highly subsidized user category. So we'll kind of go through that here. Oh, I went backwards, sorry. I, I also took the commercial and kind of looked at their interior versus irrigation, and it's fairly equal, there's about two, two million gallon difference between interior use or the domestic use and the irrigation use for the commercial centers. We then took and used the water numbers from the, that, looking out into the future. So they had Sunset Valley listed as probably three hundred and fifty-four gallons per day per capita for water usage, and then we took those and we're hoping to have a reduction of at least four gallons per capita per day, per person, kind of projected out, so that we would have a little bit of savings in water use over from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-eight of about four million gallons. When we go through this and talk about, we're going to talk about fixed versus variable costs a little bit. Fixed costs are going to be those personnel and operation things, things that we can predict as, this is how much we're going to spend in the budget, basically. Variable cost is basically the cost of the purchased water, the cost of wastewater, based on demand and usage, flex rates each year for that reason. But this is also where we see the biggest savings, I guess you could say, between what is budgeted and what is actual. So if people use less water, then we do have some savings there from budget to actuals, is where you usually see those savings. So looking at the last few years, So looking at the last few years of kind of those fixed costs versus variable costs, so those expenses are going to be about, with the contractual in there, is budgeted for FY '24 at 962,700 for water. This actually does have a reduction in salary costs because as the mayor mentioned, we looked at where people are spending their time using Pub Works and we kind of were able to reallocate some of those salaries to a more appropriate location. Probably see the biggest savings actually in wastewater because we spend, water does take a lot of time because there's a lot more things we have to do for compliance versus what we have to do on the wastewater end, there's just a lot more time spent in water. And yes, of course, salaries increase, operating expenses go up, you know, we're in record, you know, I think since 2013, obviously things are going to increase over time. And that's kind of, I think, something that should be expected is that as we go through things, operations will increase over time with, you know, people salary adjusting, operating expensive, things are just much more expensive now than they were in 2013, and they're much more expensive now than they were in just 2021. So these are things that are part of that budget here. And then you can also see the revenue in water and the, you know, deficit between the operational cost and what is generated from revenue. Same thing for wastewater. Like I said, that's where you see the most significant drop in proposed salaries in FY ' '24. So once again, looking at a budget of 713, 553 in expenses with the fixed costs and the variable cost of wastewater. And wastewater is an interesting one because it is on the residential end based on averages. And so we get, the city gets charged for every, all the water that comes into the city. It's assumed the water's going out of the city, so it is always going to be a charge for the city and almost a net kind of decrease in revenue for that reason. So we looked at the current rates, and so currently the city charges $9.14 for the base rate for water. And then they change, they have, we have three current tiers, the 331, the 560, the 992. I call tier zero the under 3,000 because they do not get, if you use less than 3,000, you're not paying anything for water or wastewater. And same thing for wastewater, a base rate of $4, volumetric rate is a thousand per thousand gallons, and it is the, 571 is the cost that the city of Austin charges Sunset Valley. So there is no increase in the cost right there for the volumetric rate over $10,000. It is straight the cost that the city of Austin charges, the city of Sunset Valley. And then we have the commercial rates. Commercial rates are based on, their base charges is based on meter sizes, with larger meters paying higher base rates. There's also a irrigation base rate. The volumetric rate for commercial districts is $6.30. The volumetric wastewater rate is $9.97. So that makes, when, so the commercial wastewater is much higher than what we're charged by the city of Austin. I think that actually helps make up for the fact that we're charged for every dollar that comes in, every gallon that comes into the city because their irrigation is not usually charged at wastewater rates as well. So these are the charges that are charged by the city of Austin to Sunset Valley every month, basically. $4.24 per thousand gallons. They also do a 10 cent surcharge for reserves. So it's effectively $4.34 per every gallon. That actually, that rate has not changed in a number of years. Austin did their last rate thing in 2019, and that rate has stayed pretty constant. They will be doing another rate thing likely next year. So those rates can change. I know there's been questions about the contract. The contract actually with Austin does not define what the cost per 1,000 gallons is. That is defined every year by their rate analysis or every, they tend to do it every five years. That is defined by that. How they determine those rates for their purchased water customers, for their wholesale customers, is based on how all the wholesale customers as a group use water. So if you use more water, you may be paying higher rates. So it's all kind of based on these algorithms that they put together. So using less water is actually beneficial because it could help modernize the rate a little bit. We are charged those base meter fees. We are charged $2.80 for, seven cents for every backflow. Every hydrant is $2.69. So these base fees here are what we kind of use, what we use to calculate the base rate that Austin charges per customer in Sunset Valley. So when we get to the analysis per how much it costs for Sunset Valley and how much we're charging, that $4.08 on base rate for Austin is a calculation of everything we're charged every month from the city of Austin. The industrial waste surcharge, and this is going to be something that's not included because this just changed today. Industrial waste surcharge at this time is $3,961.84. That's going to be going up to about $5,600 a month. And this is, these are surcharges that are only for the commercial areas. These are charges that only affect the commercial areas, they're considered to be industrial users. So those charges, we'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. We also compared and looked at other utilities, and so looked at what they are charging. So for example, in Westlake Hills, for their base wastewater residential rate is $82.44 a month. And then they also have, they have water conservation, the District 10, who provides their water. So they have another, I think, $30 in base rate for water that is charged. So that's about $110 in base rate that Westlake charges, or Westlake residents are paid, are paying each month. You can see how we went through and collected all the information from all the cities. Obviously, the rates in Sunset Valley are not comparable because they're $9.14 or $4, and these are much higher with this lowest one being, base rate being $20 for the city of Rollingwood. City of Rollingwood went through a similar thing in 2018 where they were kind of seeing where they were not paying for the water and it was being, having to be subsidized quite a bit, so they had to adjust all of their rates back then. And so continued with a few more shady hollow mud. Also, they have in district and out of district fees are not hugely different on those. Their volumetric rate, the first volumetric rate is $7.94. And as you can see going through these, that most of these organizations do have more than like the three kind of volumetric rates that we currently have. And so that information is there, so if you want to kind of look at how they're distributing their costs, and you can do that as well. So then, this is where we kind of looked at, okay, here's the, and this is something that, yeah, this was not in the 2014 report. I wanted to make sure that we kind of looked at it from a, okay, what is it per kind of group, user group that we're getting as far as the cost and what is being charged? And so that $4.08 there is going to be the base kind of charge from the city of Austin. That base charge is, remember, the cost to deliver the service, the cost to deliver water to the customers or to take the wastewater away. And same thing, wastewater has much less charge, it's about 25 cents per resident. So the cost for, total cost just to deliver water would be $4.33.
Follow along, is this table 15?
This is table... Yes. This is table 15, if you're on table 15. And so, as you can see, every residential class below, until you get about to a little over 26,000 gallons of water, is currently subsidized to some level just on the purchased water cost alone. Once we add in the operational cost, those numbers go up and you'll see that in a moment. So similar to what they did in 2014, we looked at what is the break even operational cost for a base rate? So generally, that operational cost should cover the base rate of what the, it should cover the operational cost. And as I said, this is the cost to deliver that service. And we analyzed this on, we based this on water usage, so that 32% and the 63% basically, that 32% and it wasn't on staff time regarding each customer class. Because if we think about it at staff time, there's about nine times more residential meters than commercial meters. So there is a lot more commercial customer, residential customers individually than commercial customers. And commercial customers tend to have two or three meters beating a shopping center. So we took that operational cost and we said, okay, here's the average of the five-year operational cost. What is the percent of cost that residents would be paying? And if we average that out over the number of customers, number of residents, for water, that base rate would be $30.94, and for wastewater, it would be $14.90. That is the cost to deliver water and to take away wastewater. That is the operational cost of that. The volumetric rates come on top of that and would be more of the variable cost for that. So if we looked at a full cost of service, including that 4584, which is water and wastewater base rates, that would equal then that, it's not until basically 35,000 gallons of water that there is not some subsidized portion of those costs. So this is, the next thing to look at is obviously long-term infrastructure, and I'm not going to go over every table in there, but it is a key component of utility management. We provided estimates of those utility infrastructure investments, what is needed. The current rate, if we say that the 210,000 puts the infrastructure fund in the negative by 2038, maybe sooner depending on prices or increases, additional changes needed to the system, all these things. Based on that analysis that we did, an investment of about $500,000 annually kind of keeps the fund solvent for a much longer time. Solid waste, solid waste is fairly straightforward. I'm just going to jump right here. Here is what we are charged by TDS. The bottom line is what we charge residential customers. There are no commercial customers that Sunset Valley provides for in solid waste. They have their own individual contracts with TDS. Residents do pay the full price of an extra card if they have an extra card. So in November, it would be $4.13. And so we have looked at those subsidy numbers, and subsidy numbers have grown over time, although in 2014 it was pretty high as well. But 2020, there were no transfers that were made. Everything came out of reserve fund. But those numbers do continue to grow over time. Part of that, as I mentioned, when we have more people in a higher subsidized user category, if you look at that 9,000, if you look at 9,000 gallons, you can see that that is where it's like, the operation expensive, that's like $96 a month in subsidy on that end. So we did look at what the rates are. So obviously, the residential rates do not capture the cost of service for purchase or operational cost. There's still quite a large subsidy in each of those classes. The other thing is, is that there is an unequal benefits to customer classes. The city doesn't provide the same benefit to the commercial customers that the residential customers get, so there's no, there's no net benefit. The commercial customers are paying for their cost of service, basically. I think unless some changes are made, that operational subsidy will continue to grow for purchased water and for just everything will continue to grow. And we're basically not making adequate investment into utility structure, utility infrastructure over time. So we did put together some numbers to kind of start the conversation about some recommendations on some base rates to try to bring it more to an operational break even. And so for water, we had recommended doing a $3.50 monthly increase beginning in 2024, adjusting those volumetric tiers to create five-tier classes. And I think the breakdown of those classes do mimic the city of Austin's tiers. And higher end users obviously will have higher rates. What we recommended still is that the lower two tiers are still below the cost that the city of Austin is charging, the city of Sunset Valley, but those volumetric rates should hopefully even out over time. We are looking at that, you know, residential users paying less, using less than 3,000 gallons would actually pay for the cost of the water and cost of delivery. For both water and wastewater, we provided numbers for a community assistance program to kind of look at, okay, well, what if we didn't have those significant increases for those customers who are in need of assistance in paying these bills? Again, incremental increases for water and wastewater, $4 a month in 2024, starting a volumetric increase of a dollar and increasing that annually until we're getting closer to what the city is charged. And as I said before, even with all that, there's still going to be some level of subsidy within wastewater due to the averaging. Once again, in a community assistance program to assist residents. Increasing the solid waste cost by $5 plus the 4% annual increase that TDS has until the city matches basically what the city is charged, which is, you know, right now $30 something dollars a month. The other thing we're recommending is that we remove the solid waste operational items from the solid waste budget and put those in the Public Works General Fund budget as just a general city service, not considering that it's currently all paid from the same place anyhow, and then that would just save what we consider to be, what is a subsidy. It wouldn't be a subsidy anymore, it'd just be a general cost of operation. And hopefully, as those operational subsidies decrease, perhaps we can look at more increased investments into the utility infrastructure reserves. So this chart just, and it's one of the charts here on page, I think it's 27, table 27, has these recommendations in it on how those tiers would work. We also then kind of put together examples of bills of how those tiers would work if they were enacted. So obviously, those residents who have not been paying any kind of water bill or wastewater bill would be impacted and it would be about a $30 and 64 cent increase per month. With, if we use those cap program numbers, it would be $14.32. So those residents who are in that 6,000 to 9,000 category, which is a good number of residents here in Sunset Valley, would only see an increase of $15.89 a month and 9,000 gallons of 2996 based on these rates. And then we did two for the winter with the 18,000 gallons. One with the winter average, we would hope that they would have a winter average below 10,000 gallons, which would be a $46 increase. And then for those residents with actually an 18,000 gallon winter average, it'd be a $70 increase in that because those higher tiers are, you know, we should be encouraging conservation. We want people not to be in the higher tiers. We want them to be in the lower tiers. We don't want them in those tiers where they're using 18, 20,000 gallons, you know, every month. So just to kind of summarize, some of those water conservation rebates are something we'll be talking about later tonight. I think that is an important thing to put hand in hand with any kind of increase. We also talked about whatever increases we have, not putting anything into effect until January. It would give time for everybody kind of to understand and hopefully take advantage of those water conservation rebates and make some changes to their yards and things over the next few months that can help to offset any kind of outdoor watering, which is, I think, where a lot of water use is happening for residential areas is in the outdoor spaces. Make sure we have almost like a utility newsletter every month that we would be putting out, establishing that cap program and kind of reevaluating rates every year annually, and then doing a full analysis, basically, you know, as many, we should definitely be doing this every five years and not be waiting 10 years to do these things. I would recommend that we go ahead and pass on those industrial waste surcharges to the commercial customers, just because, and actually, Austin already, when they sent it over, they already sent the breakdown of which commercial customers get how much, basically, based on usage. Something we'll be talking about a little bit with that water conservation discussion is water loss and the city's water use and how we can become better stewards of water because that's part of that waste, that's part of the water that's being used in the city in the water utility is also the city's water that's being paid for in there as well. Looking at that leak adjustment rate equalling the purchased water cost, not, you know, a lot of times when people a lot of times when people have leaks, they're not planning on that, making sure that they're not making it codified that if somebody has a known leak, they're not being charged twelve dollars for those gallons. They get charged that leak oration, adjustment rate, so it's not onerous if somebody has a leak. And maybe setting a goal to have utility fund operations being funded by sales revenue by somewhere around twenty-thirty. And then that is all I have and I can, I'm glad to talk and answer questions.
So Council, we have about ten minutes of a discussion and I'm sure there'll be further actions we'll take to continue working on these. Uh, but I would like to hear from each of you on your, your feedback and potentially next steps for us as we, um, look at this item and some of the staff recommendations. Um, so I think I, I saw, we'll begin with, we'll, we'll begin wherever, uh, we'll start with, uh, Councilor Reitz and we can go through.
Okay, so, um, I, I do think that that is correct where I think most of the water, the water usage is outdoor. Um, you know, I look at my water usage, you know, nine months out of the year, I ha- I paid the nine-dollar, fourteen cents, you know? And then the summer months, just to keep my yard alive, that's when my rate goes up. So, there's not an easy answer to that. And it's not like, how do I conserve more without changing out my entire lawn? Which, you know, we started this, uh, you know, these rebate programs. I do not think they're robust enough. And I do think that we need to look at, uh, I would really like to see, you know how you had the little class on, uh, the different, uh, the lighting and such? If we can do one on lawns and drought-resistant lawns, I think that would be, uh, very good. Because at this point, I don't even know what that would cost. And the other thing is, all of our lots are huge. You know, they're not small lots and we have, we have trees, we have grass. We need to keep those things alive too. So it's, it's not an easy answer. So it's, it's not just shaming people, saying, you just need to conserve more, because it's not that easy, I think. Um, so that's one of the things. Um, how many people are on wells?
Especially on that three-thousand gallon user group that probably needs to be addressed. Because they could be, well, be using twenty thousand gallons of water, just only three thousand gallons domestically.
Absolutely. And that's a real difficult thing, you know? People in the meadows aren't allowed to have wells and, uh, but most other areas besides the Villas have had, had wells or the option to have wells. So there's, there's a whole different ballgame there. So it's a little bit of inequities there. Um, and the other thing is when those people who do use a lot of water, they do pay for our water system. Uh, you know, they're the ones paying that extra. So, I'm not saying that I am against, uh, raising rates, because I think we do need to do that. The other thing I have a problem with is that we are not like other cities. Uh, I would like to see us compared to cities that, uh, get most of their money from sales tax. And they don't, you know, you know, these other cities have a need for other revenue. And we have a huge source of revenue. And so we are not like other cities and we shouldn't be compared directly to that. We are unique and we say we're unique, let's act like we're unique. Um, the other thing is, our tax, uh, collection allotment, is that possible to change how much we collect for street fund versus general fund?
Those are established by the state.
By the state?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those percentages.
Okay, uh, because our street fund is very robust. Okay, uh, when you calculated the average, did you calculate it by total usage for the entire year and then just average it out by month? Is that how you did it or how did you do that?
I calculated, basically, I averaged every user's amount for one, basically, and then averaged those together. So basically, so.
For a year?
Yeah, for a year, yeah.
Okay.
For a year, so it's, it's, it's every user's average and I averaged those together.
Yes. Yes, because I'm the example of the extremes. You know, nine months on the one side, the other side on the other side.
Yeah, it was an average, it was an average.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Uh, you know, BKs might be somebody to compare to, they have a higher sales tax, uh, collection.
They, they do not manage their water or wastewater infrastructure, yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty unique having a city of our size where we're also having, managing our infrastruc- water and wastewater infrastructure.
That's where like Westlake Hills has the water conservation and the, an improvement district that manages their water. Westlake only does wastewater.
Oh, okay, okay. And the other point I want to make, and I don't want to upset anyone with this one, but the two thousand and fourteen study, um, when it was done, that study used the numbers, the late, the salary numbers that the city gave them. Uh, it, they did not go through and do cost of the actual amounts and actual cost. And so it could have been, and when I looked at that, uh, what I saw was that, uh, at the time, they were allocating like twenty-two hours a day to our water service. And I had a hard time believing that we were spending twenty-two hours a day on our water service. And so I do believe that was a way to push salary information into an area where it wasn't quite so obvious. So we have to be careful about that. And we have to be careful about any type of study that we do, you know, garbage in, garbage out. And so let's be accurate with that and, um, let's, let's be true about that, so. Okay, that's what I had.
Thank you. Councilor Radikas?
Okay, um, so I just made a few notes. Um, we've kicked this can down the road for many, many years. Um, when I was on council before, we talked about it. It's, it's just an ongoing issue that we're going to have to really buckle up and talk about seriously. Because, um, you know, we can't just keep subsidizing on and on and on. So we have to get a good grip on what that is. I'm wondering why we didn't do the free assessment. I thought we were going to do that four years ago, three years ago, I don't remember. Um, but if it's a free assessment, um, and we can have a comparison to, um, the work that staff did, so we have information to compare, I think we should take them up on that. Um, so, um, and I, I don't know why we did decide last time I was on council that we would pass on any additional costs that the city of Austin, uh, gave to us. Sunset Valley is a city, we would pass that on to the residential bills. And I don't, I guess that didn't happen.
I think we have since, but.
Okay, so, um, that needs to, we need to make sure that keeps happening. Um, so the, um, maintenance costs, others, I heard that, but, so, when we talk about like, um, sales tax revenue sup- supporting everything that we do, I think that's, um, a dangerous kind of thing to put all our eggs in one basket. And I think utilities are usually enterprise funds in cities. Where, where that's part of what the city happens to use for, uh, supporting their city services. So I think the cost of the maintenance of our systems needs to be incorporated into what we pay for our rates, not just the water. And then, um, what happens to the, I think about the shopping centers and we keep talking about, oh, reimagining them, what happens when they, um, renovate and change their, their whole, uh, system, similar to what's happening at Brody Oaks, when they're going to redo the whole thing? What if that happens to one of our shopping centers and we don't have the sales tax revenue for the time of that construction? While that's all being done, our sales tax revenue is going to be impacted by that. And so I think it's really dangerous to put all our eggs in that basket. So I think we have to be planning for a long term. If we, we keep saying we want that to happen, we want the shopping centers to be more vibrant and more upscale and, you know, we keep saying that, but what does that really mean? And what does that mean for the benefits that we have as a city that we're using the sales tax to support? So those are the kind of things that just off the top of my head, um, I wrote down. Uh, I think it's really important, whatever we do, the residents need to be involved. I love the idea of a utility newsletter, um, talking about, uh, what we are subsidizing. I believe a lot of people and people who've moved here, uh, not too long ago, don't realize what we subsidize as far as water, wastewater. Um, so I think educating, you know, putting that educational information out there about what is and what it really costs the city, um, I, I think is important. Before we take any action, I think people need to know what we're actually doing.
Thank you. Councilor Zekar?
Sorry, uh, first off, I want to say kudos and thank you, thank you, thank you Carolyn, for doing all this hard work. I don't see the, the need for a cost of, uh, utility study when it's right in front of us. You just have to delve into these numbers and start doing some math and you've got all the information you need. Uh, question, if the commercial has two to three meters, are they built separately? If not built separately, does it break out irrigation from interior use?
So they do, generally, the commercial areas have separate irrigation meters from their domestic meter. Some of them will have three, so they'll have a fire meter, a commercial domestic meter and an irrigation meter. Um, I believe when I looked at the bills, they're charged the twenty-five dollars for the irrigation meter and then that base rate for the commercial meter. I don't believe there's any charge on a fire meter because it's, we hope it's never used.
And, and what I mean is, when they run the irrigation system, can you see how much is used outside versus how much? I'd love to get a sample copy if somebody's.
Yeah.
Because in the city of Austin, they don't do that. You just have one large bill.
Yeah, no, I, I, I can, yeah, I can show you what.
With fifteen surcharges, which they don't call a tax, which are all taxes, but regardless. So I'd like that. And then on table fourteen, I'm confused on the heading, so if you could go to table fourteen and explain.
So, okay, so basically what this is, is that this number right here is the total operating cost.
Let me explain what I'm, what I'm confused with. To your left, you have operating costs. So I'm expecting to look across that whole row and see operating costs. But then I see revenue and I see differences. So I'm going, okay, wha- what does that mean?
Okay, so, yeah, this is just the operating cost. This, and I could probably add in another little line here to kind of split them off. This would be the residential portion, based on that thirty-two percent of operating cost and this would be the commercial portion. Then this is the revenue that's generated in twenty-twenty-two. These are the differences in cost, what, and then this is the average based on that two-hundred-and-forty-six users. So yes, I can, I can clean that up to make it separate. Because that is just, that's just the overall operating cost and then.
Just create a new heading and then underneath revenue, put NA?
Yeah, I can do that.
Uh, next one, table eighteen. Uh, you and I talked about this one. Uh, highlight three thousand, nope, oh, you're going to it, okay. Table eighteen, highlight three thousand gallon usage. Come over to the far right, yep. Okay, and blow it up, because I, I can see it on my computer, but not everybody else can, okay? That's at seventy-six dollars. So you save the most per gallon, the more you use within the first thirty, thirty, three thousand gallons. Then you come down to nine thousand gallons, nine thousand, go up one.
Uh, oh, yeah, right here.
Right there, ninety-seven sixty-nine. The next big benefit is nine thousand gallons. So, and, uh, we talked about that. And to me, if you're doing an incentive for someone to use as little water as possible, it seems the highest number should be at the beginning and it gradually goes lower. So let's say we started at a hundred at zero and we went ninety-nine, ninety-eight, ninety-seven, ninety-six, ninety-five, so on and so on. It seems like that would make more sense, because you can see then immediately, the more you use, the less the subsidy is. Because what we're looking at is subsidy to the very right. Of course, I'm not saying start at a hundred, because we're at ninety-seven and trying to go lower. Then, uh, if you scroll down again, the next highest is right at, uh, no, where our break even is, go down to our break even. Finally, and that is what number again?
Thirty-five thousand gallons.
Forty-five?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand gallons, we finally, finally break even. It's like, wow. Yeah, so it's, it's pretty eye-opening to see all these numbers and, um, yeah, there's, there's got to be another way. I asked if we could get an Excel spreadsheet on this and play around with it. And, uh, but the formulas don't work. So what I wanted to do is take the right side, change those numbers of subsidy. So work on the subsidy, not on the usage. Work on the subsidy and say if the subsidy was limited to, uh, ninety-six on nine thousand gallons versus ninety-seven, how does that change it? And then go down the page and change each one of them to, and play around with it. You can't do it that way, because the formula doesn't work in reverse. But that, that would be something, uh, trying to figure out how to do something like that. And let's see, then next one was table twenty. We used to show how much each year that we set aside in our budgets for infrastructure reserves. And there's nothing on the bottom of here. And I, I mean, I know we had a forty-year plan and I know we had all the math on the bottom and I said I could find it in my budget book, just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
So that's basically, um, where we made the predictions and looked at table twenty-three. But it doesn't tell you how much we put in each year or saying how much, if we put in this much each year, where would we end up? So table twenty-three, right here.
God, I wish I had, uh, some veterans from budget and finance. Trust me, I know, I've seen it.
Yeah, so, so this just has.
Because we did a five-year history and then what we would recommend putting in each year. So you're saying it doesn't exist?
I, I don't have that table that you're looking for. What we did here, um, in, for the future infrastructure was looking at different investment strategies into, um, and where are those funds kind of balance out?
And I'm done, I see the clock.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And we'll go real quickly. We did start a little bit later on the work session, so I make sure that we do, uh, have a chance for all the council members to give their thoughts. Um, Councilor Young, let's conclude with you and then what I'll be doing is working with staff as I take the inputs, um, to bring back a proposal for how we go forward, um, in terms of the next steps for, um, you know, any, any furtheration of this process. Councilor Young?
Uh, first, I want to thank staff for putting all these numbers together. This is great. Uh, and I also want to thank former council member Carmona, our chair of budget and finance and Melissa for their wise words on this subject. Um, I in particular, I agree with Councilman Carmona about educating the public. And while all these numbers are great, and I'm a numbers guy, there's a lot here. So I tried to boil it down into numbers that I think everyone can understand. And there's two or three sets of numbers that I think everyone can understand. Um, I started adding totals from this between twenty-nineteen and the current budget year. In twenty-nineteen, the difference between revenues and expenses was minus four-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars roughly. In this budget year, what we have budgeted, the difference is minus eight-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars, almost nine-hundred thousand dollars, more than doubled. When you look at the difference between expenses between now and then and revenues between now and then, expenses have grown by thirty-eight percent. Revenues have grown by seven percent. This is obviously not sustainable. I think everyone knows that, but I think it's good to put solid numbers on exactly what's going on here. Um, in twenty-nineteen, our contractual costs were nine-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. Our revenue was nine-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars, almost even on that. Today, the difference is more than two-hundred thousand dollars. So I think those are three good sets of numbers to say, this is what's been happening with the subsidy. Now, I don't ever want the subsidy to go away, but I, and I like all the recommendations that staff is making, but I think maybe they're a little bit premature. Because I think we need to make a policy decision about what we want to do with the subsidies. I don't want to see that the subsidies go away, but I think we need to have a clear goal as to where we're going. For example, do we want to cap subsidies at five-hundred thousand dollars a year? Do we want to break even by twenty-thirty, right? I think you have to make that decision first and then decide, what is the set of things we're going to do to get there? I mean, I like a lot of the suggestions that I've heard, but I think you need to make that big decision first and then say, here's the steps to get there. Um, the second part is, and the other, the, the other point that needs to be made is, as this keeps growing and growing, it's, there's an opportunity cost being lost here, right? We have a lot of ambitious things that we would like to do. Uh, whether it's Cougar Creek or reimagine Brody or any of the other things we want to do. Those require an investment. And the more money we put into subsidizing utilities, the less we have to invest in those things. So we need to, we need to decide what the right balance here is. Um, I think it's clear that we need. I think it's clear that we need to raise utilities in some way. I think that that should be staggered over time, not at all at once. And I, I think everyone agrees on that, but just to make that point, we don't want to get, hit people with a great big bill all at once. And finally, uh, on the utility infrastructure, we need to make that investment to keep that fund healthy. We may, you know, most of our infrastructure was built in a 10-year period. Whether or not it all comes, it has to be replaced over a, you know, 10-year period, 30 or 40 years in the future. We need to be prepared for that. We need, we need to be able to fund that. So those are the big points that I wanted to make, kind of the big picture things, and that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Council, and also thank you staff for putting the information together and the members of the public that spoke to this issue. And we're not taking action, just as a reminder, this is, um, information that I think is very useful for the start of our conversations. And I will be bringing back to Council proposed next steps for how we continue this, whether it's another work session or if we want to start engagements at the committee levels as well. With that, I'm going to go ahead and conclude the work session at 6:11 PM. Council, I suggest we just move right into our regular agenda unless anybody needs a break at this time. And staff, are we good to go for meeting? Okay. All right, we're going to proceed. Um, the time is 6:11 PM. I'm going to open the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. And Council, just as a note, we do have a time certain item at 7:00 PM, which is the review of the comprehensive plan. And so we will pause our actions to make sure that we meet that time certain. And we will be having an executive session tonight at the end of our agenda items to discuss the executive session item that's listed. Also, a couple of notes as we enter public comments. You all should have received a letter from a resident who is speaking to agenda item number six concerns, concerning the proposed revised use policy for the city facilities. Speaking, I'm not going to read the letter, but it will be included as part of the minutes so that it is official record. But just to summarize, um, the resident is against, um, the proposed new fees or at least, uh, the current proposed new fees, you know, given that this infrastructure was built for the president's use and that was one of the, the proposals for it. There is also an Open Gov comment that was submitted, um, within the last hour from Councilmember Johnson. He will not be joining us tonight as he's on travel, but he was speaking in favor of the comprehensive plan adoption. So that was just his note to the Open Gov session. With that, I'm going to open up for members of the public that wish to speak at this time. If you can step to the podium and state your name and make your comment.
Am I allowed? Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. Thank you for this really illuminating discussion that we had during the work session. I just want to throw a few things back after what I said, what I heard. And, um, I think it's really important that we have data and more data. And I think what we have is great as a start, but, uh, there were still a lot of things in there that caused me concern and I will probably try and address that with individual people. But, um, in the 2014 rate study, in order to get it, we had to promise that we weren't going to analyze rates. That's, that's just how much resistance and it took, it took a long time. But, but to get the people to agree to it, we had to agree that we would not analyze rates. So people say, why did you do half? That's the only thing we could get through Council. That's, that's why it's a poor study. So, and, and, but the good thing is that I recall that if we had a base rate then from people's analysis, it was only $40. And so we're only at 45 is good. Now, those were, neither of those are, are good analysis, but it was, but it's interesting to my ear and I'm just giving you that as a historical piece of information. But, but we were precluded from having a good rate study and, and that's the only way we could get it through. That's just the resistance to people hear about money, about water and money issues. And so that's just, you know, that's just what it is. But just historically, wanted to say that. The, the other thing is, and I'm going to again say, we need to hire the staff first. Because in order to do a good rate study and get the data that we need, we, I, I'm going to encourage you to hire the public work staff that's requested and get those hired before you do your rate study because you can't do it later in, in the fact. You have to have the people in place in order to do the analysis. And that's what they'll tell you when you talk to the Texas Rural Water Association. And I do believe we need to have that. What, what, not that the staff isn't good, but it's not defensible. So when we go to court, Miguel Huerta will tell you that you, he wants the gold standard, he wants us to pay for it. But I'll take the Texas Rural Water, Water Study as a start because they'll at least do it the same way the gold standard would be done. And so I think that's really important to have that kind of analysis that's defensible. So, so, and, and because we are trying to run a good utility, we need to have defensible things. Because there were, there are reasons for people to have filed suit on us because of the way we've done our water structure. We need to build our infrastructure back up. And that year that we said, oh, look how much money we have, let's go spend it on other things. And, and oh, look, we, we did so great. We didn't fund infrastructure. That's part of why. We need to go back and fix that. That's the first thing. Because that's our infrastructure, that's our long-term savings account, and that's important. So let's take that leftover money and put it where it belonged. That's why we had the bonus. That's it. Y'all are great. You're wonderful. I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you so much. Everybody.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak at this time? There'll also be an opportunity to speak at agenda items as well. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number three, which is staff report, beginning with the administration report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to highlight a few things. Uh, we've got, um, some other administrative staff that will be giving reports. For upcoming events, uh, one thing that I didn't put in my report, so July 22nd, that is Saturday, is the first day of filing. There will be three, uh, places on Council, uh, and eye contact notice is scheduled to go out. And then the deadline for filing is Monday, August 21st at 5:00 PM. Also, um, coming up, it's, uh, on the agenda for consent items, uh, on July 29th is the Violet Crown Trail North opening event. It's kind of a, um, it's going to be a fun event. Partner, the city's, City of Sunset Valley is partnering with Violet Crown Trail and City of Austin. That is from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM, Saturday, July 29th. August 4th, we have CPR first aid training, that's a Friday. And then Friday, August 11th, is the City Hall Grand reopening event from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM. And I will go ahead and pass it on to Jerry, who has some updates, uh, from the legislature and also some development and development updates.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jerry Restovin, the Development Services Coordinator. Um, I'll start with the, uh, agenda item three, the legislative update. One thing I've learned over my time doing, uh, development work and planning work is that the legislature is often like the Texas, the Austin weather radar. What appears to be foreboding and threatening by the time it arrives is often, uh, much less so than what it appeared to be at one moment. So while there were quite a few bills passed or, uh, filed this session that would have had major impacts on our city and other cities, by the time you get down to the end of the session, what actually gets forwarded out to the governor is actually a much, much smaller list. As I put in my report, there's over 8,000 bills that are filed, only about 1,200 that pass and, and are moved on to the governor. Uh, the important set, the important bills, I think, that could affect Sunset Valley that did pass this past session. Uh, first of all, is House Bill 2127, which you may have heard referred to as a super preemption bill, also referred to sometimes in the media as the Death Star Bill. This bill addresses exemptions, I'm sorry, exceptions to, um, uh, in the relationship between state law and city law. This concept is often much broader and is more often talked about in the relationship between state governments and the federal government. In this case, we're talking about the relationship between city government and state government. So the, uh, House Bill 2127 laid out some very specific exemptions in areas where it said, um, state law preempts, um, city law. Those are in the areas of employment regulations, payday lending, evictions, veterinary care, and animal sales. The bill also addressed what is often called, um, field preemption. And these are not specific areas that are identified, but these are rather much broader areas. Uh, if you think about the relationship between federal and state, it would be federal has jurisdiction over, say, foreign policy and state does not. So although there may not be specific laws that say the state of Texas, for example, cannot declare war against France, field preemption states that that is a federal area and not one that the states can get into. So likewise, that's trying to do, this bill is applying that concept to the relationship between, uh, cities and the state. And it is now forbidden for cities to enact regulations in the broad areas of agriculture, finance, insurance, labor, natural resources, occupations, business and commerce, and property. Those are all sections of the state code that are preempt city regulations. The way that the bill is structured is to actually not to invalidate existing city ordinances that do address those broader areas. Rather, it allows for an individual, um, to file a lawsuit against the city regulation that is within one of those areas. So there is not a need for a city to actually do anything at this point. Uh, the City of Houston has voted, uh, to challenge this bill in court under the, um, concept that it violates the part of the state constitution that allows for home rule cities. Uh, the City of Austin, uh, today was actually considering whether they're going to, uh, join that lawsuit or file a lawsuit on their own. The bill, I would like to say, namely affects, um, home rule cities. Again, getting back to the broader concept that a home rule city can do anything except that which the state does not permit. A general law city such as Sunset Valley can only do the things which the state does permit. So with that regard, the so-called Death Star Bill mainly affects, I mean vastly affects, uh, home rule cities and should have very little effect on a general law city like Sunset Valley. However, that very specific exemption relating to veterinary care and animal sales does affect the city of Sunset Valley. We do have portions of our zoning code that affect where a, um, a vet clinic is allowed and what the process for, um, one opening up is, as we did, uh, as y'all know, a few months ago. A specialty permit for a vet, vet facility. So in the future, uh, again, there's not a requirement that we change our code. But in the future, if someone were to say, hey, you can't regulate that, that is a fact. Other bills, there are Senate Bill Number 20, 2028, I believe, I'm sorry. This allows for a person to file for a leave from the city's ETJ. Sunset Valley doesn't have a lot of ETJ. We have a portion on Sterns, a portion over here of the apartment complex on Brody and some on Country White. I don't really see an advantage to anybody trying to file to get rid of, to leave our ETJ. They would simply fall into the City of Austin's ETJ at that point. And based upon a previous lawsuit that Sunset Valley was a part of, they would still default to Sunset Valley's regulations. So I really honestly don't see a reason anyone would, uh, partake in that. Uh, and then another bill, um, House Bill 1193 prohibits a homeowners association from restricting residents who are receiving a housing subsidy. Again, I don't know if that applies anywhere in Sunset Valley, but I just want to let you know that, um, um, that is no longer allowed. House Bill 1750 and 2309 and 2947 all restrict the ability of cities to regulate agricultural operations. Um, I have looked at our regulations regarding agriculture and they're actually pretty, um, non-restrictive. So I don't see any areas where we would actually run crosswise through that law. House Bill Number 3699 is a subdivision shot clock bill. It just states simply that, uh, when, if a city requires a completeness check prior to filing a subdivision, that the completeness time is included in the, uh, timeline that the shot clock bill allows. I don't think that would be an issue here. We generally get those things done quick enough that, that doesn't become an issue. And finally, um, Senate Bill Number 929 regulates the city's authority to regulate a non-conforming use. Excuse me, non-conforming use is where the city goes in and changes the zoning on a piece of property and makes what's already occurring on the property, um, no longer permitted. Where legal non-conforming means that they are allowed to continue that use, um, even though the zoning has changed. Some cities put timelines on how long that use can continue. Uh, this bill states that in those situations, the city may be liable for compensating a land use, a landowner for the termination of the use of the. So again, I don't think that that happened. I don't know that that's ever happened here. I just want to let you know that the, that the, if the city tried to, um, affect land use in that manner, there may be a, a financial penalty to the city for it. So this is a bill, the TML, uh, separating what, I think that could affect Sunset Valley. I honestly don't think that compared to the ones that were on the table.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions on the legislative update? I appreciate it. All right, we'll pass it on to, I think Danielle.
Yeah, Danielle's going to give a community coordinator update. And then we have one thing to briefly discuss with, about a CED request, so.
Can you guys hear me better now? No? Maybe I need to be closer. What about now? Okay. Um, so one of the, a few of the things that I wanted to highlight, um, I talked a little. Okay. Is that better? Okay. Um, so a few things that I would just like to highlight, I, I provided you guys a summary, so I'll just highlight a couple of things, um, that I wanted to point out. Since I've had this role, I've been able to kind of implement a couple of policies that we've been able to use in the city and I think it's really increased engagement. Our social media policy was one of the first things that I presented and was approved by Council. Since then, we've been able to go ahead and create a couple of platforms. And we've increased engagement through our Facebook and our Instagram accounts. Uh, the facility use policy, which I know we're still in the process of approving, but that's also something that I've been able to work on and, and, and try to, you know, make it a benefit for the city. The overall branding, uh, rebranding is something that I've been working on throughout the year and we're continuing to work on that, but just sort of, um, transitioning the old branding out and bringing the new branding in. Uh, we are currently looking at some opportunities for, um, emergency messaging, uh, for the community. SMS messaging that may be able to go out. Uh, we've been in talks with Granite Coast about, um, implementing that through our platform and I think we'll have a little bit more discussion on that. Matt will review that a little bit more. But that is what's on the horizon, um, for something that I'll be looking into and working with Matt to complete. Uh, we have been able to, um, really reach out to the shopping center managers and create, um, really great and strong relationships. We've been able to collaborate with them and communicate with them on a regular basis regarding any issues that come up or any questions that we have from the city. And hopefully that's something that we can continue. The details of everything else that I've been doing and will continue to do are in my report. But do you guys have any specific questions for me right now?
Thank you for putting this preparation together. I know we've accomplished a lot over the last 12 months and it's been good to see the, the new forms of outreach as well as the events that I think have drawn a lot of popular interest. You know, particularly around the family-oriented events, something that we, we've noticed a lot too. One thing I didn't know that we had resumed and I'm glad to see that we have is the gift, uh, baskets for new residents, um, kind of a welcome kit. So I'm glad that we're able to do that and greet. I know we have a lot of new residents that are interested in moving to the City of Sunset Valley, so it's good that we have a, a welcoming, uh, for them.
And, and she also takes welcome baskets to the businesses too. So like when Second Street opened up, it's just another opportunity to say, you know, welcome to the city, to our commercial partners as well, so.
Thank you, Danielle. Council, any, any follow-up questions for the community coordinator or the update? Oh, go ahead and turn your mic on, Councilor Rose Carden.
I attended the fraud and scam, uh, presentation that was done here. And it, it is eye-opening just what's going on in this country. Scary, very scary. And Danielle helped with setting that up and getting everything on. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you, Danielle. Thanks, Jerry.
I think Jerry's going to have one, one more development-related update and then I think we're done with that.
So I do have an announcement to make. The Red Robin, as y'all know, closed about a month, maybe a month and a half ago. Um, I have been working with a, um, a team that is proposing redevelopment for that and it is proposed to become, well, I can tell you they have signed a lease, it will become a Raising Canes restaurant. So, um, I'm working with them right now. We had a meeting this afternoon to go over the proposed site plan. Um, they have not filed anything yet. We're just going over with them the regulate, the city regulations and requirements. But it does appear that they are moving forward and, um, we had a meeting with about 10 or so people from, from their team today.
Yes, and I spoke with Councilmember Reitz today, who is the liaison, but was out of town for their June meeting. June was the last time that they met. So the Chair of CED proposed, and the committee agreed, wanted to send out a survey to residents, kind of polling the residents on what type of businesses they would like to see come into Sunset Valley. And while that's great information, staff is not recommending that we go through with that survey because that is something that the city does not control. We do not have agency. We don't have even sway, sway really, to tell the shopping centers, you know, who to bring in. You know, the relationships we've been building are with the managers who do not have control over the leasing. The leasing is done by corporate. These are these big corporate entities, you know, making these deals. So if Councilmember Reitz wants to chime in, I think that when we send a survey to residents and residents take time to, you know, fill out a survey, it should be something that the city has agency or authority over so that, you know, we can, we can do something with that data that we collect.
I would agree. It's a nice idea to get ideas out there, but I think it also builds expectations that the city can do something about that, and we cannot. And so I think it would build false expectations. So I don't really think it's probably the best use of resources to do that.
And I've also spoken with Councilmember Medicas about just the issue of surveys in general, because I know this has come up in the past. You know, maybe staff can work on, and Councilmember Medica shared some information with me. There's apparently a resident that's a statistician or an expert in this field, and maybe we can come up with some guidelines or criteria, like, okay, this is when the city should use a survey, and these are some of the criteria that should be built into the survey, so.
It was Brandon Chackleford, who had, the last time we did a big city survey, had quite a bit to say about it, and apparently a composition of how you ask the questions and really being clear to our residents what we're going to do with the information, why we're doing the survey, and what we're going to do with it, were some of his feedback. But I thought, I suggested that staff could reach out and maybe talk to him about coming up with a policy about surveys, why we do them, when we do them.
Any other questions for the admin portion of the report? Councilmember Rosengard?
David's Bridle is closing. Do we have someone for David's Bridle?
No, not yet.
Not yet. An update on Korean Pod. What's going on? Are they ever going to open?
There is. I drive by it once a week just to hope. I have not seen any activity there. We'll be, we'll try to reach out to them and see what's going on there, but, you know, the pods are still there, the permits are still on the wall, but there doesn't seem to be any activity occurring inside the, inside the building.
Okay. Thank you.
And also just to clarify for the Raising Canes, it will be coming back to the City Council for y'all's approval in the future, so it is something that the council will be able to weigh in on.
All right, let's move on to the Public Works report.
Yes, so just a few things to update. So I think the electrical panel over at kind of Farmer's Park area should be all operational now. It finally got connected by Austin Energy, so we're going to be working on removing the old panel. As Matt had mentioned, Violet Crown Trail brand opening will be next Saturday from nine to 10:30. Hope everybody can come over there. We're going to have like an ice truck so you can be able to get a icy real quick and walk the trail. It takes about 20 minutes to walk from one end to the other and back, well, 40 minutes round trip. So hopefully everybody can come out there. We're wrapping up the teen program, have summer youth program in the next couple of weeks, so I'm sure you've seen them out and about. We have been sending them home on these really hot days at noon because it's just too hot for us to have them out there working nonstop. I do want to give a little update on the Austin Water contract. I met, I talked to Austin Water today regarding that because we had been going through, because at one point Austin Water had said, hey, we want to do these standard five-year contracts with all of our wholesale customers. They've kind of put a break on that, so we're still operating under the 2007 contract, which is a 30-year contract, so as long as Austin Water is good, then we'll just keep walking, going under that contract. So we won't be doing any work on that until they need to make some kind of change or need to do something different. And if there's any questions about anything, I'd be happy to answer those.
Carolyn, one thing I was going to request is, we haven't had an update, I think, on the website to the CIP status spreadsheets in a few months, and I was, if you could, in the coming month, you know, if you could make an update for those, just to make sure that we're, we're able to keep the residents and councilmembers informed. I was also going to ask about the infrastructure transfer status for AISD, if that's been completed.
So not yet. We are going to, we're shooting for August 1st that week for that. So we will be, when I spoke to Austin Water, they said they relieved everything would be able to move forward just fine. They'll have to do a final meter read. We'll be reaching out to AISD this week to kind of give them a heads up because they will be out of water for a period of time while we make that connection. The plan would be to open up the street and get a lot of it ready in advance so that the downtime is reduced as much as we possibly can. The good news is with the new connection over to Curly Mesquite that's now active is that the majority of this side of town will be able to have water. It will only affect those residents on Jones Road when we have to close down water. It won't affect, we'll be able to supply water to pretty much the rest of Lone Oak, Pillow, Reese, and Sunset because that line is coming in from Curly Mesquite now. So that will hopefully happen on, like I said, August 1st.
The last thing I was going to just suggest, and I'd love to just even see like a small summary, but maybe in the next council meeting, just a summary of the summer youth program in terms of, you know, what, what the kind of, you know, activities they were doing, but also like the participation, because I think it's useful to promote that to residents, new residents as a way of bringing in, you know, youth into.
They've done all sorts of things. They've been, they rebuilt the trellis over here. I mean, obviously they painted and stained that, and they've been doing a lot of meter change outs and learning about meter change outs on Oakdale, so.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Medicas?
I just had a question on the, thank you, I'm so grateful that the electrical panel finally got hot. A little better late than ever, but I appreciate that. It looks great. There's a plate that used to be, if you walk into the farmer's market, there's a big, huge metal plate that is just laying next to the ramp because during Art Fest, Sam got some blacktop and made a little bump up, so that is now what's being used as a ramp. But before, that metal plate used to be there, and I think there were like sandbags under it, but it's just kind of laying there, and it's, people could get hurt. It's not over anything. I don't know who it belongs to, but when you walk into the farmer's market, you kind of have to walk around it.
Okay, yeah, we can remove that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Public Works report? All right, moving on to public safety.
Good evening. At the, can you hear me? At the last council meeting, I mentioned that the large campsite behind Speck's and Sam's was being cleaned out, and we've started to see the kind of residual effects of that that we knew would happen. I believe each of you were copied on an email from a resident that was concerned about the number of, the amount of foot traffic on Reese and Sunflower Trail. That's related to that. We, we set up at that part of the city, and we captured, caught a few people using the trail back behind the new, the park on, at the end of Reese to go to a camp that's on, off of West Gate, the Drive Creek Bed. We contacted a few of them who were on, who were pushing bicycles or riding bicycles, and you actually can't ride a bicycle down there, so we use that as the reason that they can't go there because there's no law against them, of course, traveling up and down our streets, but that's where a lot of that traffic was coming from, was to get to those creek beds. The email also mentioned people using the park. There are more people using that little park at the corner, but we don't allow camping, setting up any kind of structures or anything like that, but, I mean, residents are probably seeing an increase of traffic over in that area, but we're keeping our eye out. Haven't had any complaints of any crimes or anything going on, but it's a little busier over there. We have a few events coming up. The summer, we're calling it a crime program right now. It's kind of more from a whodunit type deal to a program where we're going to introduce careers in criminal justice to young people. We have someone from the FBI coming out, some constables, and a few other different law enforcement people besides our Sunset Valley officers. That's scheduled for August 7th, I believe that's a Monday. And then coming up October 3rd is the annual National Night Out. That's, of course, the PD's big event, so, and we're already making plans for that one. It should be a little better than last year.
Yes, thank you for moving forward with the Summer Kids Crime Camp. I did see that there's some information posted on the city hall, and can we also post information on the city website for residents as well? And I'm assuming there'll be some communication going out.
Yes, we'll put it out.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Public Safety? Councilmember Young, and then Councilmember Medicas?
I'm probably not telling you anything you don't already know, Chief, but I am one of those residents on Reese and Sunset. I walk my dog twice a day on Reese, on Sunset Trail, down Valley Creek Park, and even over to Cherry Creek Park, and I am seeing more, more activity there. And in particular, I don't know if you've talked with Austin Police about this, but I see people camping right in Cherry Creek Park right now, and I'm afraid that that's going to start to spill over into us.
They're aware of the camping over at Cherry Creek. We cleaned up some cardboard camps the other day. The, the other camps, APD is aware of them, but, I mean, we knew it was going to happen. I mean, we'll try not to let, or they will try not to let it get as big as it has in the past, but I know that during these hot summer days, they're probably not going to relocate anybody until it cools down a little bit.
Medicas?
In relation to that, there were just a couple of break-ins at those duplexes that are on West Gate by the little Exxon station there, just this last week, and I'm wondering if that might be part of that. But I had a question on, the Planning Environmental Committee has been concerned and has gotten complaints about dogs off-leash in the Greenbelt, and I was just wondering if you've had anybody out there and if they've, you know, seen anything.
Yes, we, we've been out more frequently than we had in the past. We've written a few citations. In fact, we get a call from, I think it was the Hill Country Conservancy. People were complaining about Austin PD writing the tickets out there. All of a sudden, well, that was us writing the tickets. Some people from the apartments. Most of the violators were coming from the apartments across the street, by Home Depot, and that's where the two complaints came from, so.
We had our first municipal court defendant last night that pled not guilty to a.
Off-leash?
To an off-leash statement. Worked out a deal with the prosecutor, so yeah, they're writing tickets.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Public Safety? Thank you, Chief Carter. All right, Council, the motion is to agenda item number four, which is consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Councilmember Rosengard?
I move to approve on consent agenda item number five, number six, number seven, number eight, number nine, number 10, and number 11.
So the motion is to approve on consent items number five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. Does any member of council wish to pull one of those items? Councilmember Medicas?
Number six.
All right, we'll pull number six. Any other items that council wished to pull? All right, is there a second for the motion to approve on consent five, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11?
I have a second.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor approving on consent, item number five, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent, item number five, the minutes from the June 20th, 2023 regular meeting. Item number seven, approval of a temporary special use permit for the Violet Crown Trail North Project opening event on Saturday, July 29th, 2023, with a backup date of August 5th, 2023, Home Depot, on Home Depot Boulevard, and it looks like we will not get any rain in the near future. That'll cause us to use the backup date. Approval on, approval of a temporary special use permit for the Bodies Race Company to hold a 15K marathon. That's a weird, 15K marathon, along Jones Road, Ernest Rovels Way, and the Tony Burger Center on Sunday, August 13th, 2023. Approval of a five-year inter-local cooperation agreement with City of Austin for Public Health Services with the initial annual term beginning August, October 1st, 2023, and expiring September 30th, 2024. Item number 10, approval of releasing a request for bids for solar photovoltaic installation on the Public Works and Police Department buildings in consideration for a possible fiscal year 2024 project. And item number 11, approval of asbestos remediation and demolition of residential structures at 6107 and 6401 Brody Lane by American Abatement pursuant to RFP number 05222023, and also as recommended by the Public Works and the P and E committees. So Counsel, that'll take us to agenda item number six. We do want to pause for our time certain item. If we get into discussion, we'll move to that item so that we can resume discussion, but this is the approval, consider and act on approval of the revised city facility use policy and fee schedule, and we'll hand it over to staff for an introduction of this item.
Thank you, Mayor. So from our last discussion, we did make some adjustments to the policy. I worked with our city attorneys, including Darren. He came up with a bar service agreement that he thinks covers liability so that, basically, if a resident or group that rents the facility wants to serve beer or wine, they have a certified vendor that's insured, so then that covers the city in terms of liability. There was another, some language added concerning repetitive use, which is, you know, an issue with the last time that I think the facility use policy came before council, and I thought that the attorneys provided great language. Basically, you know, it's, you know, approved by me, and, you know, I can, and me and my staff can, you know, make, you know, work, work with the applicant, and if they don't like the decision, you know, if we feel that it's, they're using it too much, or it's, you know, eating up too much time and not, not allowing other people to use the facility, you know, they can appeal the decision to you all, to council. To address, there was several residents concerned, and in this, in the first draft of the policy, it was drafted to be a kind of a non-social use, and I, I knew that that wasn't going to fly, so I, I changed it. Well, no, you know, we, we want it to be able to be used for things like parties and events like it was in the past. So I did add some language, and I hope you all received it. I think Carolyn has it pulled up, which just then mirrors who can apply. And so it just adds to authorized users, Sunset Valley residents, Sunset Valley employees, and then the nonprofit uses. I know one other comment in the, in the citizen comment that was made was, you know, calling it a limited public forum. Well, I think that's what we want our city hall to be. We don't want to have political rallies here. We don't want, you know, for-profit groups coming in using city hall. We want to keep it to residents for personal use or for nonprofit, not-for-profit use and, you know, non-political uses. So, any questions?
Why was the time change so dramatically? We went from 60 days to 180 days.
That was discussed last time, that 60 days really just isn't, you know, if you're planning an event, especially something like a baby shower or something, or even a wedding, you know, you want to, or a conference, right? If you, you know, you want to have time to plan that event so you can, and so I think 180 days is good. And then anything beyond that, like say a wedding, and someone wants to book it a year ahead, well, then we can come to council. And we used, we did that in the past.
Okay.
But I think 180 days is a good, I mean, six months is a good amount of, good amount of time. that, like say a wedding, and someone wants to book it a year ahead, well, then we can come to council. And we used, we did that in the past.
Okay.
But I think 180 days is a good, I mean, six months is a good amount of, good amount of time.
Councilor Meteus?
So, I mean, I just had something really small, but to address one of the citizen comments, was on Attachment D, the fee schedule?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if we, the conference room is no fee for up to two hours. I wonder if we could just extend that to up to four hours, just to give people a little bit more free time?
Sure.
And then the only other thing I thought was that might be, we might want to consider changing, is that there's a flat fee of $100 security deposit, rather than having to figure out what rates you're at. But I'm not real...
The, the mayor and I talked about the, the security deposit and just setting it at the, the rate of the, the room rental, which would be for the, either the $25 rate or the $50 rate. So really, I mean, we're going to be collecting that at the beginning, and then if all goes well, they'll get that $100 back. So, you know, they'll, they'll be paying it regardless, right? Like, you know, if they have an eight, they, let's say they have an eight-hour event for City Hall, right, their fee will be $400. So then they'll pay 500 upfront, and if all goes well, they'll get that $100 back. But that $400 is just the fee to rent the building.
Oh, because it reads for one-
Yeah, maybe it's not reading right, so 100?
It says $100 for one hour events, and an additional security deposit at the rate of the rental for each additional hour.
So, so like if you have an eight-hour event-
It's more security deposit?
Yes, it's more security deposit. So then in case some, yeah, but they're-
I know, you get it back when you return it. But the four hours, I think, might address some of the-
Sure. I, I'm amenable to that change if council is due.
That's the only thing I have.
Councilor Rosengard?
So, give me an idea, who is renting the facilities and for what purposes?
So, I would say a vast majority. Back when it was a former city employee, before that it was me that did reservations for years. And the vast number is social, right? Occasionally you'll see, you know-
A wedding.
Groups use it for like a meeting, like a resident that has a business, and they might not have a physical office. The conference room is a great room to have a business meeting, right?
Okay.
Also, this does not, because a resident emailed, this does not apply to city sanctioned events. So a resident that, you know, has put on CED-sponsored events in the past, this policy does not apply, or a fee doesn't apply, because that's a city-sponsored event.
So if it's a committee-
Yeah.
Who wants to meet?
Yeah, if, if CED, because CED, when they review this, they say, well, what if we want to have monthly game night? This policy doesn't apply to that, because it's, it's a city-sponsored event.
Okay.
And Arts Commission has events here, too, so we wouldn't-
Okay.
But yeah, the vast majority of the use was social, social events, parties.
And we, and the other big change is that previously there was no alcohol allowed at all. This is allowing it under the supervision of the TUBC.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's good.
I think that would open up more of social-type events that people wouldn't, in the past have wanted to hold in.
And more cleanup expense.
More cleanup expense.
If they don't do it, yeah.
Counsel, any further discussion on this? Councilor Meteus?
I make a motion to approve the city facility use policy with a change in Amendment D to the conference room for four hours free versus two.
Is there a motion, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Councilor Young? Any further discussion? I will open up for the public if they want to make any comments for the assignment. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Right, motion passes. Counsel, we're going to be going to our time certain item, which is our next agenda item at 7:00, so we'll take a five-minute break for folks to stretch and stand up a little bit, and then we'll start at 7:00.
Testing, testing. One, two, three.
Apologies for the technical delay, but we're ready to resume.
So, as I was saying, the comprehensive plan is a visionary document that provides guidance for the city with regard to things such as future zoning decisions, future planning decisions, future amendments to the Land Development Code. It addresses areas including environmental concerns, quality of life, resiliency, surviving natural disasters, as well as balancing the needs of our residents and our businesses. I'm pleased to report that both the Planning Environmental Committee, as well as the Zoning Commission, recommend approval of the complete plan as it is in your back-up, as well as the staff. And I would like to thank the mayor this morning. The mayor let us know about 12 typos that were within the document, regarding punctuation and other matters. And so we discussed this this morning, and what we agreed to prior to the final issuance of the document, posting it on the webpage. We will go ahead and make those changes. I can tell you none of them are substantive, they're, they're just things that we've missed. And thank you, Mayor, for pointing those out. So with that available for, available for any questions?
Thank you. And I also want to thank the members of the Planning Environmental Committee, as well as the Zoning Commission, and the members of the public that provided input into this process that we began now over a year ago, I think, last summer, at least, yeah. And it, and I think, you know, at the time, we were, we maybe assumed that it was going to be a quicker process, but in the end, I believe it was a process worth taking the time for, to getting the input. And also just thanks to, to Matt for working through that, and making sure that we're informed about, you know, the updates. With that, I'll let counsel ask any questions about the material, or, and then open up for the members of the public that wish to speak to this item as well. Councilor Rosengard?
On page 140. Yes. Agenda item number 12, it's pages 137 to 152, which is the comprehensive plan. There's 188 pages in the packet.
Okay, the goals?
Yes. In the goals, one of the goals is, how do we mitigate for prolonged droughts or severe weather? I'm sorry, one of the goals is, can you blow that up? One of the goals is to mitigate for, let me go to it, protect, preserve and protect, preserve and restore. Mitigate, there it is. Fourth one, mitigate against the potential for increased flooding, prolonged droughts, severe weather, and wildfires. While I can understand mitigating against flooding, increased flooding, that is basically making sure creek bed is cleaned out, making sure that if there is additional impervious cover, that there's storm drain ponds put in. But I don't understand, and I can even understand wildfire mitigation, that is to keep the underbrush trimmed. But even with that, if there's a lightning strike, we can't mitigate it. We can mitigate the damage of it, but we can't mitigate the actual. So when you go back to prolonged drought and severe weather, how do we mitigate those two? We can mitigate the damage from, we can be prepared for, but I don't see mitigating against. And let me go to my notes back, I have to go foot back and forth. For instance, if you go to, oh, and this is not one of the original goals that was just reworded. So if somebody says, hey, that they just took the goals from there, reworded it, no, this is not one of the original goals. This is a new goal that was added. You can plan, because if you read further into the comprehensive plan, and you go to other sections, like section, let me read my notes so I can be sure and say it correctly. Section 404. Section 404. Section 404 says, "The city must not only plan for emergencies, but must also mitigate in advance of the disasters. The city of Sunset Valley prepares for natural disasters through regular controls, improved infrastructure, education, emergency planning, and the promotion environmental conscious choices." Or, page 148. 148 drought, you're there. First sentence, "The city should consider the following to help mitigate damage from droughts." Page 148B, mitigate the impacts of flooding. And page 149C, planning for and mitigating damage from these storms. So, it's all addressed appropriately later on in the comprehensive plan, but when it's in the goals, it doesn't add mitigate for damages. So, I think we can solve that concern by adding mitigate against, oh, we're having computer problems again. That's the same thing that happened at the fraud and scam presentation also. So, I don't know what's going on.
Well, we'll look into that. So, right, and so each of those sections, section 400, you know, mirrors the goal. So, 404 is kind of the strategies to help implement, or the city to further advance that goal.
Let's play devil's.
So, you're just, you're thinking that it should address that it's the damage from flooding.
The goal should say what we address later on. Later on, it talks about mitigating and not only against the potential, but it also uses the word, the damage.
So, council member, would you propose, and if we said mitigate against the potential damages from increased flooding?
Increased flooding. Mitigate for and for both. Mitigate, just like you had it written before, but then add also mitigate against, because you can mitigate for increased flooding by keeping the creek bed cleaned up. So, you're already doing an action before flooding happens by making sure you don't increase potential flooding. And with wildfires, same thing. You're making sure the underbrush that is dead and dry is cleaned up to mitigate against a potential fire. But then, when you have severe weather, there's nothing we can do to mitigate severe weather. That's out of our control. But we can mitigate the damages from the severe weather. We can mitigate the damages from the prolonged drought. So, you can add the two together and make it.
It says mitigate for potential damages from increased flooding, prolonged drought, severe weather, and wildfire.
Well, is it, so is it mitigating for potential damages? Well, yeah, so, because there's, yeah, as you said, council member, there's like the preparedness aspect, and then there's the response.
Correct. And if that sentence says it all, then that's all we need.
Okay.
Say as much as you want to say with the shortest possible sentence. Okay, for potential damages from increased, yes, because that would do it. Excellent. Thank you.
And so, we'll change, so this sentence will then change also in section 404.
Actually, 404 sounds great. That's where I got the idea from. Because when you go read further on, then you see how it should tie together. Okay, next one. Where we were in the goals, it is development, redevelopment that enhances the city's unique character. Okay, so here, there's no definition of what the unique character is. So, let's just pretend. Let's pretend that today's my first day as a council member, and I have to make a decision, and something came before me. And I have to make a decision that enhances the city's unique character. What is that? What guide, what definition am I using? Now, that is brought into the picture later on in the comprehensive plan, and that is more of the, I got to find my notes again. The original states, "Sunset Valley is a unique and pleasant place to live, work, and play. Its very special quality is derived from its terrain, beautiful views, dense foliage, unspoiled creeks, wildlife, and large areas of relatively," can't say that word very well, "low population density." So, that's what they're calling unique. So, there's your definition. So, if there was some way to put a little more of that information in that sentence, because if somebody doesn't read on, they don't know what that really pertains to. And I know we were trying to keep it as concise as possible. I've listened to lots of these meetings. Let's see. "The city recognizes these characteristics of Sunset Valley as important and desires preservation of the quality and integrity of the same." So, a recommendation, I thought, protection of the city's natural resources and Edward's Aquifer. Promote responsible development and redevelopment that enhances the city's unique characters of its natural resources and Edward's Aquifer. Now, it doesn't encompass the large, low-density lots, but it does by saying its natural resources, including the terrain, the foliage, the unspoiled creeks, the wildlife, but it doesn't say low-density neighborhood. So, do we need to add that? The unique character of its natural resources and protection of the Edward's Aquifer. You think we're done? Natural resources. Yeah, well, earlier, I do have it in my notes here. You could also say C-section 404, C-section 405, et cetera. I don't know if we want to do that or not, because then there's a lot of sentences in there. You could say that again and again and again. How does that read? Promote responsible development and redevelopment that enhances the city's unique character of its natural resources and protection of the Edward's Aquifer.
And this is section?
Everybody good with that one?
So, this is section 40?
405.
405, which, does that have a lot?
Yeah, that's 405.
So, the mission and the vision are on the website. If you go to the homepage, Carolyn, and then you go to government. Or, sorry, I believe it's under residents. If you go to vision, the vision and mission statements. And so, the mission statement, which I cannot find a record of when that was actually passed. It's somewhere. The vision statement was amended, but I don't know when that mission statement was passed. I'd have to do some digging.
Oops, we just went black again.
So, the mission is, "The city of Sunset Valley's mission is to foster a unique small-town sense of community that respects and protects quality of life and provides a safe, secure, natural, and physical environment. These values will be realized through high-quality employees and volunteers operating with integrity, accountability, and tolerance to provide excellent public services." That's the city's mission statement.
Okay. It says natural environment. So, we've got that in there. And then, the next one is honor the rural history of the city. So, on honoring the rural history of the city, if you go to section 406, page 150. Again, I would want to know, what does honor mean? Does that mean large lots? And when you go to 406, they never use the word honor again, except for in the heading, but that's exactly what it means. The rural history meaning large lots, small roads, et cetera. So, could we there say? And it says more. It says, "Respect for the native vegetation and wildlife, including ample space, fresh water, fresh air, and habitat diversity that fostered varied plant life." So, honor the rural city would be to include, now, here, I'm baffled, I'm still struggling with what word to replace the word honor. It may be say C-section 406. That's where I, honor.
I mean, so would you, so are you?
Because they use the word honor there, I don't want to mention.
So, in section, so in the, just that one page that has the goals?
Yes.
Would we maybe put just a statement that, you know, for further explanation of these goals and implementation, see, you know, see the corresponding sections?
Well, we could do that.
Because that page is supposed to be just like, here are the goals, and then the section 400 has.
And then later on, they go into each goal deeper. But if it's a person who just reads the goals, and then they're done, and they're going to come and make a decision, it's like, oh, you don't have the depth. So, short and sweet, because originally, we thought the comprehensive plan was going to be one or two pages, and it's 13. So, short and sweet, goals, be concise right up front. So, on honor, we could say, honor, honor, honor. Define what is meant to honor, to keep large lots. Honor, honor the rural history, honor the rural history.
It was preserve, which then we had a lengthy discussion about, is preserve the right word, considering, can we really call ourselves rural anymore?
Okay.
So, that's, we then changed with discussion, I believe we reached consensus on the word honor. So, it was preserve.
It was preserve, and now honor.
I do like the suggestion of including, you know, a sentence that says these goals are.
Yeah, maybe just on that page, we say, you know, these goals are further elaborated on in sections, you know, C-section 400, for further elaboration and discussion of these goals.
But I think mitigate and the other one promote are better written with that detail in there, rather than just that statement at the top and leaving it the way it was.
The other thing you should do in an online document is have links. Like, you say C-section 406, that should be a clickable link to section 406.
Go right to it.
Yeah, and this is just a text version, by the way. So, this one right here. We'll have an online version that will have live links. Like, if it mentions the Parks and Open Space Plan, it'll link to the Parks and Open Space Plan. And, yeah, we can do that. On this page, on the living document, you can, yeah, we'll be able, so you can click directly to that goal. So, if you're scrolling over honor the rural history, then you click on it, it'll take you to that page. So.
Okay, and then?
Jerry, can we make a note of that?
What are we doing on the word honor? Got that? Then, on the next one, on page 143, healthy living and active lifestyles. If you guys don't mind, I'm just going to go through my list, and then anybody else can go through their list and get it all done at once. It's page 143, it's six of 13. There. Healthy living and active lifestyles, it probably starts on page five. The fourth bullet, 1, 2, 3, 4, "Provide fitness opportunities within the city. Engage residents to determine desired city amenities to promote healthy living." Well, that just told me what the next three bullets say. They all say the same thing. So, if we are doing number four to make that inclusive with the next three bullets, you can shorten that up by simply saying, "Provide the city fitness opportunities for all ages with outdoor activities, explorations, and improvements to city amenities." Done. And you don't need four sentences to say the same thing. Provide city fitness opportunities for all ages with outdoor activities, comma, explorations, comma, and improvements to city amenities. Typo one, outdoor.
Improvements to amenities?
To city amenities. And now, the third, next three.
I would say two amenities, two city amenities within the city sounds, yeah.
Exploration and improvements.
Oh, there we go. Yeah.
Within the city amenities, or two. Yep. And then, all the rest of them can go away. Anybody feedback on that, that you agree? The next one is 143D. 143D used to be a whole different topic. It used to be economic resiliency. And so, I was worried as I'm reading that I'm not going to see economic resiliency. And I found it elsewhere in section 406. Strategies that can help the city foster economic resiliency include, page 150. 406, first line, "Strategies that help the city foster economic resiliency include," so it does show up again. So, D used to be economic resiliency, and that became the police department and safety of the city. And then created section 406, which is the economic resiliency. So, glad to see that it was still in there. Page 144A, park and open space. 144A. Say it again? I don't have that written down, but in the future, I do. Page 144A, park and open space. A, 144A. A, keep going, keep going, park and open space. That's it. Okay. Sixth line down, add a space, now I'm getting into typos. Sixth line down, add a space between land and that, and you already got it. Next paragraph, seventh line down, put a space between to and the. Last line, last line. Right there. Yep. To and the. And then, page 146, page nine of 13. Oh, I'm sorry. This is a note to myself. Reducing septic tanks in the city is a big plus to improving water quality in the city. So, it's a note to myself, sorry. Page 147. Annual inspections of water quality retention ponds. We are now doing this as an annual deal. Surely, we've been doing it, but we need to make sure every time we add, that something has to be done on a regular basis, that we also put it on a calendar somewhere, that someone in Public Works is assigned to that and held responsible for that, so something doesn't fall on the wayside. So, my note is staff time needed. Page 147, 10 of 13, mitigate against the potential for increased flooding, what I stated above, prolonged droughts, cannot do anything about, severe weather. I'm simply repeating myself from the goals.
Right.
And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members want to weigh in on edits or corrections? Councilor Young, and then Councilor Reed.
Yeah. I had a quick question on something, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but the Canalis property that's at the end of Rees, isn't a significant part of that supposed to be marked as conservation, or have I got that wrong?
Yeah, so, we realized there was an error on both the city zoning map and the future land use map. So, Carolyn actually updated the, I put it in the agenda folder. So, we made an update to that. So, you are correct, council member. So, that very bottom part is.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So, the flum, and just, and this was a good education to me. So, again, the flum, the future land use map, Jerry and Carolyn and I had a discussion. So, the reason, so the flum is designated in land use categories. That's why you don't see every single individual category. It's more broad, right? That's why parks, green spaces, conservation areas, it's just one designation on the flum versus the zoning map, which then delineates each of those sections. So.
And it is zone green space?
Yeah.
Councilor Reed?
Yes. First of all, I just want to say thank you to all who were part of this process. This is a very difficult process, but yet a very creative process. And you have lots of competing ideas and thoughts. And the fact that it came down to this document, I think is pretty miraculous. And kudos to all those. I had just one little suggestion, and if you go back to that goal, the two of one goals, the very last goal, I would really like public infrastructure as listed in the title. You do find it in the words, in the paragraph of it, but public, well, facilities and public infrastructure.
Okay.
It's. Yes. Yes, that would be fine. That would be fine.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
I'd like to open it up for members of the public that wish to speak to this item. If any members wish to, please step over to the podium. All right. So, we have suggested edits by council members and with that, we could entertain a motion with the edits or any further changes that a motion maker wishes to make. Councilor Medikas?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, um, adoption of the revised comprehensive plan and land use map with, um, corrections and amendments made this evening as recommended by the zoning commission and planning environmental committee.
Is there a second? Councilor Young, seconds? All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Do you want to see it back?
Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Thank you, members of the public and the members of the committees and, uh, and commissions.
Good work.
Good work. Now the land development code. All right. Uh, council, as I mentioned, I'd like to move us to executive session so we can discuss that item while we have presenter here. If we can get a motion to do so, I'd appreciate it.
Motion to move into executive session.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're going to move into executive session. We'll resume our, um, public discussion with agenda items number 13 and 14 after we conclude our business in executive session.
While we.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We return once again to discuss the storage yard. So, um, staff, Carolyn and myself, we have made several calls to TCEQ and, um, tried again to dig through the Texas administrative code. It's not fun reading. But essentially, I, I will sum it up to, um, we've determined that if we were to operate the storage yard as only a, uh, brush and mulch collection facility, uh, we would not be required to do the TCEQ notice, uh, because we are exempt from that. One, because we only take, uh, you know, yard waste, brush and mulch, and also because we're a local government. Um, we're still waiting on confirmation on, um, what is it? It's like the, uh, basically an air, air, if we need, uh, if there would be anything relating to air quality from the acti-, from the brush chipping activities and whether that is permitted or a registration. However, the, the committee discussion direction, and I feel the direction from council is to maintain the bulk, a bulk collection. Right now, there's a.
S, test, one, two, three.
Right, council, we're going to resume our agenda item with agenda number thirteen, presentation discussion and staff direction. Oh, this is, these are the two non-action agenda items that we're having for tonight, so discussion only. Presentation, discussion and staff direction on the operation of and rules and regulations for the city's storage yard. And we'll hand it over to staff for introduction of this item.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council. We return once again to discuss the storage yard. So, staff, Carolyn and myself, we have made several calls to TCEQ and tried again to dig through the Texas Administrative Code. It's not fun reading. But essentially, I will sum it up to, we've determined that if we were to operate the storage yard as only a brush and mulch collection facility, we would not be required to do the TCEQ notice, because we are exempt from that. One, because we only take, you know, yard waste, brush and mulch, and also because we're a local government. We're still waiting on confirmation on, what is it? It's like the, basically, an air, if we need, if there would be anything relating to air quality from the, from the brush chipping activities, and whether that is permitted or registration. However, the, the committee discussion direction, and I feel the direction from council, is to maintain the bulk, a bulk collection. Right now, there's a thirty, thirty-yard roll-off. Staff is recommending reducing that down to a twenty-yard, which actually will make it easier for people to put stuff into the roll-off. However, if, if, if council goes with that direction, we will need to be a noticed, it's not a permit, it's, it's a notice, a TCEQ citizen collection station. And we would need to shut down the storage yard for ninety days to do that. And the, the paperwork, that application was included in the, in the council packet. Other information, I mean, I hope you all, I know the Planning and Environmental Committee looked at the staff pictures. I hope you all were able to see those pictures. I think those kind of illustrate some of the issues. As you can see, a lot of boxes are dumped, and not broken down boxes, but just boxes dumped, which is not even, it shouldn't even be in that, inside the storage yard. So another staff recommendation is that we work with TDS on getting a, it's a cardboard specific container that has like a thin slit, so that it kind of forces the, the user to then break down the box to insert the cardboard. So that's another thing we would add on to the, to the storage yard, since that seems to be a big, a need, is cardboard, specific to cardboard. So hours of operation, the Planning Environmental, Environmental Committee recommended Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven PM. And then Saturdays by appointment, we, the mayor and Carolyn and I, we, you know, we discuss this maybe a four-hour window, you know, we can, we can discuss this, we just proposed one to five PM. You can also see some of the other regulations. We're keeping the key card access, however, you know, we want to state in the rules that key cards are not to be distributed to non-residents. Staff feels this is what has happened and caused a lot of, the problem is, you know, oh yeah, you give it to your contractor, well, then they keep it. And so, key cards are not to be distributed. Load limits, the P and E committee recommended, rather than trying to limit loads, that Sense Valley residents, users would have, should have access for twenty-four days. Meaning, you know, you can use, it's not twenty-four uses, because, you know, we know that sometimes when you're, you know, if you have a lot of brush, you might need to go several times a day. We, staff still needs time on how we're going to implement that and track that. There will have to be logs, there's going to have to be logs anyways, if we're a noticed facility, record-keeping. Any other changes or updates? We just want more signage, you know, to say what, you know, cannot go in that bulk item dumpster, no construction debris. Now, that doesn't mean, to use Councilmember Johnson's example, you can bring a door, right? If you're like replacing a door, you can bring that. You can, toilets, right? If you replace a toilet, it's kind of like jobs that you can do yourself, you can bring that. But if you're doing a remodel, no, that is on the, there should be, the contractor should have a, you know, waste dump onsite or haul that, that construction debris or remodel debris off. Any other updates? That we, that are big changes from last time. I was just speaking with the attorney earlier. What, what we would like to see is that, and council discussed this last time, kind of, you know, punish those that are abusing the system, right? And so, we need to, staff still needs time to work with legal on, you know, enforcement of these rules. What we'd like to do is rather than create a city ordinance, then where it becomes a city violation, is that we would like to, there's a, a state violation for illegal dumping.
Correct.
So, but we want to make sure that our policies, that if they, you violate that, if that's eligible to be a, an illegal dumping, which those have very hefty fines.
Yes.
So, illegal dumping. So, I don't, if you, yeah, so this section here, we'd have, legal and I, legal and staff have some work to do, to see if we can really, if this would qualify as, as illegal dumping. So, and then, of course, all of these rules and regulations, once they're finalized, this is what will be sent to TCEQ to say, okay, here's what we plan to operate. Carolyn, anything you would like to add?
No, I think that covers pretty much everything from any environmental. I think there will be some impacts regarding if we need fencing and cameras and stuff. We may have some vegetarian impacts from that.
Yeah, and that could be included, and, you know, depending on the direction we go tonight. I mean, I think regardless, we need some security upgrades and cameras. I think councils, P and E was in favor of it. But in, in discussions with staff, rather than, you know, going out and buying a Ring camera, we want to incorporate it into the security camera system we already have, rather than going out and buying a separate system just for the storage yard. Let's incorporate that into the system that we already have.
All right. Thank you. Let's go to Councilmember questions. We'll start with Councilmember Reitz and then Councilmember Rosen.
So, why did y'all decide on hours of, on weekends, on Saturdays by appointment versus, I know we, y'all had talked about maybe one Saturday morning a month or something like that, where it would be a known quantity kind of thing. Why, why the appointment versus that?
I think, just because the feedback, we, a lot of people, that's, you know, Saturdays are when they're doing their, you know, their cleanup, or they might have contractors.
Oh, yeah. I heard about, I heard about it.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. So to take it away, and, and, you know, Public Works, again, staff still has to work out exactly how this is going to work, but, you know, there are things called weekend rounds, where a Public Works employee, you know, is up here on the weekends, kind of checking in, and that could be added into two rounds, to weekend rounds, of course, we'd need to make sure that overtime is covered, because this would be overtime, right? This is, you know, the city offices are not open on Saturdays. You know, chief, chief discussed, well, what if an officer, but, you know, if they're on a call, and then someone has an appointment, and then they can't get over, that could, I mean, we maybe want to keep public safety separate. Carolyn, also, there's a way to open it remotely, too, so.
Yeah, so I, I can open it remotely, from my phone, basically, and I can open the gate, and so we can schedule calls and stuff.
Okay.
So if they can call and be like, okay, I'm here now, and I can turn it on.
Okay.
I, I think we can work it out, where it will work, and we can give access to those that need to use it on Saturday. I just think that having it open, you know, on the weekends, when there's not staff here to see what's going on, you know, just for the full day, there's.
Yeah, I just thought it would be staffed, and it would be a regular thing, but, okay. So.
Yeah, and the, yeah, the proposal now does not have, I mean, it's still un, I mean, it's still unsupervised access. But it, it still is going to require extra staff bandwidth, right, for the, the record-keeping, the logs.
So, from seven AM to seven PM, that's overtime, and then on Saturday from one to five, that's overtime?
Well, again, this is not.
Because anyone working after five o'clock, that's overtime.
It's not staffed, so.
But who's staying here from seven till seven on weekdays?
No one, because it's, yeah, no one.
It's not staffed, so why not? If we need to staff it on Saturday from one to five, to physically see what they're bringing, then why don't we need to physically see it from seven AM to seven PM?
So, we're not going to physically see it from seven AM to seven PM during the week either. It would be camera, we'd be relying on the cameras to see who's doing what, basically. On Saturday, we would have to be staffed, because we're going to limit the access on the weekends, because that's when we typically get most of the dumping is over the weekend. So we're just going to have it open Monday through Friday. People can use our key cards from seven AM to seven PM. And staff is here from seven AM till five, there's some staff here at least, and then he's always here, but, and then Saturdays, they can set an appointment, and we'll be able to open it for them, so that it's not free access, basically, on the weekends.
So, I'm going to repeat as a summary, from seven AM to seven PM, it is not staffed. So what prevents someone from coming in at seven AM and doing exactly what they used to do on the weekends? So before staff is here, they get in and they unload a whole bunch of stuff, or at seven PM, six-thirty PM, they do the same thing, because now they can't do it on Saturday and Sunday.
So it, it would have to go to enforcement at that point, and we'd have to look at the cameras to see who did that, who did what, and use the cameras to determine that.
And then, the last time we talked about this, I remember both the chief and I agreeing that having cameras isn't always the answer, because somebody has to watch all that video.
Yeah, that is true. But it was, a lot of the feedback we were getting was to just allow access is what was wanted.
Sometimes maybe just putting a fake camera, just to make them think there's a camera.
Yeah.
Will deter some of this.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and we're really hopeful, too, that I think, I think the ex, you know, the extra security measures, you know, we, and you were there in the committee meeting, where their, the resident's contractor knew, you know, the resident was like, here, you know, use my key, and he, oh no, we know how to open it. You know, people know how to open, trigger the gate, right? So putting the, you know, putting more fencing, making it a more secure facility, I think if we really do beef up the signage, you know, you know, violators will be, you know, punished. And, yeah, we are going to have misuse, and we.
Can't say one word.
Hopefully, it will, hopefully, it will greatly diminish, but we will have the cameras in place. But yes, that is staff time that will have to be used to, you know, review the tapes and then go do code enforcement.
Also, when you reduce from a thirty to a twenty, size dumpster, what, what is the measurement?
Thirty yard to twenty yard.
Yeah, yard, cubic yard. Now you're lowering it, so people can at least get things in, but you're going to have more debris on the ground, unless you do two of them. Trust me.
Two?
No, I think the goal is to.
Once you get lower, there's not as much space to put the stuff in.
Right.
So if you still have the, the same amount of stuff coming to, to the facility, then if you lower it less, less capacity, now you have to have two of them in order to.
And, and that's where enforcement comes in. One of the things in there for illegal dumping is, is you can't put it in the dumpster, and so it's not acceptable.
Right.
Yeah. And then, and just based on the photos, I would hope that, that we don't have those items in there, which would reduce the quantity by nature of, you know, the illegal and stuff. That's, but, yeah, I think, in addition, we, I think what I want to hear feedback from council on is that this is going to require us to shut down the facility, or have a alternative, if we're still doing brush collection, to allow people to still do that while we shut down the bulk, which I think is probably the better route to go. But it's going to, you know, we had to time that, we had to, you know, consider, you know, what's going to take for these upgrades, and time the upgrades with that as well. I think, one, it would be useful for us to see if we can still collect brush while we're doing the shutdown of the bulk, right? And maybe that means hauling off the dumpster for that ninety days, so there's not really an option for them, and the signage and everything like that. But, yeah, that's something that we just, if we're going to go forward with this, it's a requirement. It's something we have to do. Other questions, or Councilmember Medikas?
So, part of the discussion in the Planning and Environmental Committee was, rather than do something drastic, like take it away, to do the steps that we need to do to secure it and to actually see what's happening. We do have monitors and cameras that Public Works show up in the Public Works around the building, and to add that, we should be looking at that anyway. We should have a camera on that and on our well, probably, so that we're looking at the whole facility, not just, just the couple places where we have it. But to do those first, and really understand what's happening, and if we do good signage, we fix the fencing, so they can't just flip the gate in the back and come in and make it secure, if that addresses the issues, then we should be good. If it doesn't, we can come back and look at other alternatives, but rather than taking that drastic step of taking something away that seems to be used quite frequently, let's, let's secure it first and understand what's going on.
Tell me about the gate in the back.
Yeah, there's a gate, apparently, when, when the contractor told our resident, I don't need the key, I know how to get in, apparently, there's a way to flip the gate in the back.
You just go into the storage yard, have a piece of metal, wave it over the sensor, and then it, and the thing opens.
Because it's really hard.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a sensitive vehicle.
Right.
And you can just walk in the yard.
Got it. Oh, my God.
Contractors are smart.
Yeah. So that was the discussion, I just wanted people to know that.
To councilmembers, so, but if we do keep bulk, we have the issue that we're not, you know, in compliant with TCEQ. So if we keep that, we've got to, but then that means shutting that part down, right? So, yeah, yeah, just.
Councilmember Young.
For that ninety-day period, can we send out something in advance telling people, hey, use TDS? You can, you can call them twice?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and, yeah, and we hope that the information we provide, I, I, you know, I really hope that residents will take advantage of it, because that, I mean, that is, I wish I had that, where you could call, you know, I have to wait until my, it's my turn, neighborhood's turn, I mean, to have, where they come to your curb and take it away, I think is great.
Smooth descent of gas.
I can't afford it.
Well, this is a good opportunity to make people aware of this, because most people aren't.
Yeah. And I know this is not directly related to the storage yard, but, I mean, I would like, just because we ran out of time in our utility rates discussion, but specific, I mean, we're talking about solid waste here, and I kind of would like to get council, I don't know about you, Mayor, but your feedback on, because all of this that we're talking about right now is, while, yes, we, you know, it is a TDS dumpster, like the, the operation, the management, the enforcement of the storage yard, the brush, the brush chipping program, you know, maintenance of the equipment, and that's all handled by, by our staff, right? How, how do you all feel about moving those expenses out of the solid waste fund and into the general fund, since it's a part of Public Works anyways? And it's, it's really beyond the scope of what TDS provides? And then if those expenses in the solid waste department are only the contractual expenses, I think it's a lot easier sell, as you can really see, you know, the gap in the deficit of the solid waste department. Because the, the services, you know, the storage yard, our brush chipping program, all of that is, you know, done by, done, operated and managed by Public Works. So move that into the general fund.
I think the, the other thing that we, so, direction to staff coming out of this item, and we will make sure we get public input, too, but I would like to see budget in the fiscal year '24, I'll propose in the budget, but work with staff on the security upgrades, because I think you're right, that the signage, the security upgrades, those things that we, we want to take attention to soon, or as soon as we can, and put budgets aside for them, because that will go a long ways towards misuse. If there's an option for people to, you know, go back there without a key card, there's not really anything we can track or, or do, you know, to do that, to manage that. While we're also sending out information to the public about, you know, the, the updates, right? And I think that preparing them for when those updates are going to be in place, and the alternatives during that time period, right? So, yeah. Basically, like, when, if we go forward with, you know, we decide that we're doing October first, or we decide that we're doing November first, or December first, or January first, whatever it is, there's plenty of notice, and people are aware that during that ninety period, the alternatives are to use TDS, or take it to their own, on their own, to other facilities that are available. And just reeducating people that they can't be using this facility for things that have been traditionally used, hazardous waste, you know, they, I mean, I saw like paint, you know, cans that are full, you know, or whatever they are, and those things are not what's something we can collect or, or provide for, so. We'll open up for members of the public.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. I did get to be in part of the Planning and Environmental Discussion on this, and, and things after it have popped up for me, so that's why I'm speaking again. I, I agree with everything that P and E said, and everything that Councilmember Medikas said as well, because that, that was really clearly the thing, let's establish the rules, let's educate people about the rules are, and let's post them for signs. And then I think a lot of our problems will disappear, or we'll know what our real problems are that are left. But, like, the day after that, I had, you know, the stuff that I've been wanting to get in my truck and taking over, and I had left out pallets for two weeks out in the front of my yard, and they were still there, because I had gotten a big riding mower. And so, so we were, we didn't want to be bad, and there were pallets there, but those placed with the pallets was not marked that we could do that. And so, we ended up putting them to not litter inside of the dumpster, and then I came back the next day with a brush load and noticed they were, at least some of them were over where the pallets were. And so I think that's the thing that comes up, are pallets. And, and they will not get picked up other places, so I think we need to address pallets specifically. So I think we need to address pallet specifically because immediately, even though I was, I I knew what we wanted to do, I was already in a quandary of, am I going to do a legal dump here? What am I doing? So I think that that was another issue that didn't come up and and a problem that I needed to solve. And then a couple of other things occurred to me. Maybe because, you know, I think they were just using TDS, but but the pallets wouldn't have fit in my TDS thing. It was, you know, it was a big thing. It was, you know, it was bigger than what would have been allotted for the TDS pickup. And so I knew that was an option. It wasn't going to fit in the in in the parameters. So I didn't have a place to put it. So I I put it in the dumpster. So I I think that it's it's that maybe we might want to do one pickup in that ninety days. Because if it was possible to just have a dumpster for things that didn't, that that might just be a possibility. And then we're not keeping you in the storage yard. We're just sticking a dumpster somewhere on the property for 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 one pickup in that ninety day period. That might be a possibility. I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying we have to do it. It's just if we have an outcry, that might be something we consider. And that, because there were things that I wouldn't know what to do with. Anyway, so I think that this is really good. And I'm I'm in favor of us continuing this service. More than half our residents use it. And we do a really good job with it. And I know people are sometimes frustrated with it. But I think when we do the things we're supposed to do and put all these things on the website. You know, before they used to be in the old directories. And 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 all of our services were in the old directories. And I think there should be a thing on our website of all the wonderful things you get here in Sunset Valley, but also what your responsibilities are. You know, and your responsibility is to follow the rules. And these are the rules of the storage yard. There's a whole page for them in our new website. And 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 so if you've got a question, and then we can put all those suggestions. And if you don't like these rules, here are your options. But I think a webpage would solve a lot of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Rosengard.
What about the idea of, like, what you do with brush chipping the last Thursday of the month? Everybody knows you're going to cut down branches, get ready for the last Thursday of the month, put them out at the curb side. So what about on large collection, large bulk item collection? You do once a month? Feedback. How's everybody think about that? That way it's controlled at a specific time of the month and it's staffed one time. They're allowed to bring their stuff over to City Hall. And it's done. We don't have overtime from seven till seven. We don't have overtime on Saturdays from one to five. Would that work?
So you're suggesting that we do once a month curb side pickup?
No, 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 no. Once a month, they're allowed to come over here and staff then checks what items they're bringing in.
So I know that actually TDS suggested something of that nature when we talked to them. They did that, they even, TDS actually can do that themselves. Where they do a once a month kind of bulk item, or not a once a month, they do a citizen, basically, it's almost like having a citizens' collection day. And they do something of that nature. I mean,
Yeah.
It it that that is something that is a possibility.
What's what's the negative of doing that?
People like the convenience of being able to do it whenever they want.
I mean, people like the convenience of of running water as much as they want too. But sometimes you have to say, okay, okay, where where do we need to stop? So I'm, and if it's if one, once a month is too restrictive, every other week? Because when it's brush, because just going on and thinking it through, evidently I have never used it for refrigerators or all these boxes or all this renovation, et cetera. But I have used it for brush. And so when there's like the freeze that happened and there's a lot of brush, et cetera, myself and my neighbors put a bunch of it on the street and it lasted for forever. Well, then finally you just give up and you take it to the city. That's different than the big bulky items that is mandated by TCEQ on certain rules and ordinances. Thank you.
Other feedback, Council? So staff, I'll, we'll continue work on what the the rules will be for this so we can bring back something for council and of course, working with legal. I think that putting the budget items in for upgrades to the the storage yard at a minimum is what we want to move forward with. I think moving that thirty yard dumpster to twenty yard dumpster, posting the signage, those are things that we can take action on. And then once we have the rules, we can come back and bring that to council for consideration and and possible adoption. But I appreciate everybody's input into this and hopefully what we end up with is a a more educated resident base that is aware that this is not something that some people may just not be aware, you know, and that they're, that this is causing an issue both from a legal standpoint, but also from a city, you know, employee standpoint as well.
The pictures really helped.
They do.
See it to go, oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
That's someone tearing down their fence.
All right, Council, let's go and move to agenda number fourteen.
Karen had another question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Councilor Medikas.
Did we set a date for leading up to the closure so we can do the application?
No.
I think the staff recommendation was October first.
And that's, I think that's going to be too soon to get everything together. I I think, yeah, we, staff needs more time to get, you know, solid budget numbers. That will be a project than what
So you'll come back with that recommendation?
Yeah, I think that would be something we'd bring back.
Okay.
With the rules to, right, that we can say, okay, these are what we're agreeing to. This goes into effect and we have time to notice the public a period of time.
But if we do go forward and do this, the time to shut it down is definitely not February, March, April, May, when it's the growing season of all the brush and you're doing a lot of trimming and a lot of cutting.
Well, I'm hopeful that we don't have to shut, I don't think we have to shut down the brush because that's not
Well, you're shutting down the access to the to the area unless you have it.
I think what would have to happen is we would have to remove the dumpster for that ninety day, that time period.
So there would be no bulk, no bulk.
Divide the areas.
It would be brush only.
But then you've got two gates.
It would be brush only.
Yeah. Did you hear what I said? The only other way is divide the areas, additional fencing. Over here is bulk items and over here is, but takes away space. I know. I know, and double fencing and double gates and, oh, God, okay.
All right, any further discussion on that item? All right, let's move to the last item, which is presentation discussion, staff direction on the expansion of the city's water conservation rebate program to include both residential and commercial as recommended by the Planning and Environmental Committee. And we'll either, I think we'll start with staff and then if council wants to speak to this item as well.
So in during the budget process for FY twenty three, council set aside a million dollars for water conservation efforts. And since that time, Planning and Environmental has been working on designing some new conservation programs. And and it's kind of recognizing also that it's not just rebate programs. There are also upgrades that could be done to city facilities and education and some other research that needs to be done in the future regarding reuse as well as, you know, addressing water loss and those kind of things. So one of the first goals was to develop effective commercial and residential rebate programs. And so the way it works is many of the residential programs that are offered by Austin Water Utility residential customers of Sunset Valley are also eligible for. Unfortunately, on the commercial side, the commercial customers are not eligible for Austin Water's utility rebates. So what the committee did was to look at many of the Austin Water programs and to, for commercial businesses, which is something we have not done previously, is offered commercial rebates. And to make sure that these are included and have a rebate program. As we discussed earlier, commercial cost counts count for sixty-three percent of the water use. That includes the commercial and the multifamily. And so we came up with basically some recommendations. Let me see if I can make this work. Some of the proposed rebates. Right here. So there are some changes that are recommended to all the rebate programs, mostly going for the for the residential side on rainwater harvesting. Residents are eligible for, I think, five thousand dollars from the city of Austin. So for this one, it was recommended to up the rainwater harvesting rebate to five thousand as well. Currently, I think the first five hundred is covered to at a hundred percent. This would make the rebate covered at a hundred percent for the first thousand dollars. It also is going to change up, so we'll have more specifics, but it would change up and allow for rain barrels for in the villas, basically, because they for the most part, a catchment system that is larger than that may not make sense for those properties. For the water conservation landscaping, also removing, there's a minimum like size requirement, removing that size requirement, upping it to a hundred square feet for the hundred dollars per hundred square feet on most of these and up to three thousand dollars, which is a huge increase on that one. And it would also, like I said, residents would be available, eligible for the same, another three thousand dollars from the city of Austin. So that's like basically a six thousand dollar rebate on different types of landscaping. So it's moving lawn to native beds, lawn to non-irrigated areas and lawn to native adaptive prairies. And actually, we took out the lawn to non-irrigated and increased instead, increased the value of capping the irrigation stations instead. Because if you're moving to non-irrigated, you increase, you're taking the irrigation off, increase the cost of removing the irrigation. All the others on the residential end, I think we kept pretty close to the same except for the the capping station and increasing that ability there. Then there were a couple of programs that were new, that were not not things that we had before. So they, city of Austin had a rainscape rebate. And I think if you attended the rainwater harvesting presentation, rainscapes and rain gardens and those kind of things is basically a passive version of stormwater management and rain catchment. So it was, Austin does thirty cents per square foot up to five hundred dollars. This is actually removing the minimum for the villas as well and doing a dollar for every foot up to three thousand dollars. This is, could increase a lot of rain catchment and rain capture on property. And the thing about these is that they can be something, a beautiful part of your landscaping. So they could be a real amenity. It cuts down on water use, catches water wherever you need it and would be a really good thing. Another one that's not, we, the city of Sunset Valley doesn't have is a pool cover. So kind of marrying that and doing covering costs a pool covers. Also, I think these are called landscape survival tools. So these are things that can be done that are going to help you hopefully reduce the amount of irrigation that's in your yard. So composting the yard, irrigating the yard, improving the soil profile should hopefully reduce the amount of water that needs to be used to maintain your yard. So, hold on, it's about to die again. The fifty dollars for, so Austin has fifty dollars for dillow dirt, forty dollars for mulch. We didn't put the mulch on there because you can get large amounts of mulch from Sunset Valley really, really inexpensively. So fifty yards for, another fifty yard dollars for yards of compost and then a hundred and fifty dollars for the coriation. Because if you're going to have a yard done, that's going to be a more expensive task. And unless you're doing it, you're buying the airator and doing it yourself or renting an airator. So that is for the residential. And then making sure the water timers and matching those prices of the water timers. Those are the kind of changes to the residential programs that are being recommended at this time. And then we have a number of commercial programs that would be entered into. And so this includes water wise landscaping, which is partially eligible for rebates from the city of Austin. So it would be adding on to that for the commercial customers. The Bucks for Business program is an interesting program that Austin Water has done. And it's basically the commercial group kind of, whoever it is, comes up with how they are going to save water and then they're paid for how much water they're saving. So it's not for the city to decide how much, to design the program. It's for them to come up with what makes sense for them and then just show how much water they're saving over time. Commercial kitchen upgrades, Sunset Valley has a number of restaurants. These have all different amounts from forty dollars to five thousand dollars depending on the upgrade or the new installation that's being done. So that could be really beneficial to some of our commercial businesses who may have been around for a while and if we want to see if they want to upgrade some stuff. Rainwater harvesting, it's up to ten thousand dollars generally with the commercial businesses. They have, you know, huge roofs and stuff like that, so their systems could be really large. This is the one, water efficiency audit is the one that the committee recommended paying a hundred percent to promote to all businesses, basically. And that is to, and we would hopefully receive a copy of the report. And then this is the first step to receiving any of the other right rebates for the commercial businesses. And there's a list, I think, on Austin Water's website of people who supply this service. And basically, the commercial businesses go out, they get these water audits. They save, you know, they find out what changes need to be made, what things they need to do differently. And hopefully, some of these rebates will help them make those changes and conserve a lot of water. And this would be covered at a hundred percent for those businesses, up to about five thousand dollars, which should cover the cost of those, the the audit. I think this is probably one of the most important things to do for the commercial businesses is is this audit. I think they have some landscaping rebates as well. And I think that may be it. So in addition to the rebates, we're also looking at some projects that would be on the city properties regarding changing some irrigation out, moving more to drip in some of the areas where we have more spray heads. So making a few adaptive changes for the city in those areas. And I'd be happy to answer any questions and see if we need to make any changes to anything. We will have to come back with actual like ordinance and things like that. Since the money's already been set aside, I don't think we have to wait for FY twenty four to start some of these programs.
Thank you. And Councilor Reese, did you want to add anything else to this or do you have questions?
No, the the one area is the the lawns, the drought resistant lawns and such for residents. You know, here, you know, this is kind of the carrot, carrot, and you know, we just talked earlier about the stick, you know, carrot stick approach here. And is this incentive enough? I guess what I don't know is, in general, to change out your lawn, like, what kind of cost are we talking about?
Twenty-five thousand dollars for the villas.
For the villas, oh, gosh.
I can tell you that based on recent quotes that we've received.
Yeah, that's a bit daunting. And yeah, so that's a tough, that's a tough sell then, you know, if that's the amount, you know. And we do have, we've set aside a million dollars in this, you know. So, I don't know, I think we should get a little more information on that and see what see where is, where's the sweet spot that starts motivating people?
I also had a question about the the tank rebates. I know that, you know, initially, we've been looking at various forms of that. You know, I I think doubling it is and increasing the ceiling is good. But but I think we could even go a little bit further on that as well. Because, you know, some of the benefit of that harvesting, you know, we're talking tanks that are probably much more expensive than five thousand dollars. So right now, I think the way it's structured or posed, a five thousand dollar tank would end up costing the individual two thousand dollars, right? Because they'd pay a thousand dollars and then they pay half of the remaining four thousand dollars based on the current proposal.
So they would have the rebate from Austin as well, so.
So they would also have the rebate from Austin?
It's it's up to ten thousand dollars on that for residents to do that program. So if from, if the tank costs five thousand dollars, the first thousand dollars would be covered at a hundred percent by Sunset Valley. And everything else would be covered at fifty percent. So.
Fifty percent by the city of Sunset Valley, fifty percent by the city of Austin?
City of Austin.
So five thousand dollars would be essentially covered by a full rebates from both cities?
Pretty close, probably, yes.
Okay, that's the more, yeah, I didn't, wasn't counting the Austin in that. So that's helpful, you know.
And another part of that is another thing that the committee recommended. Because when you have a pressurized rainwater Because when you have a pressurized rainwater harvesting tanks, you have a requirement, you have a backflow test, you have to install a backflow and you have to have it tested annually. For rain system, rainwater harvesting systems, there would be an annual backflow inspection rebate, basically, to cover that cost of the backflow inspection. Now, if you have a backflow for your swimming pool, you're still having to pay for that. But for the rainwater harvesting tank, you can do the, this would cover the rainwater harvesting tank inspection, basically.
The color of the ink on this, these pages is so, and I know it's not ink, but.
Yeah, I don't know why it's like that.
It's so hard to read.
Yeah.
Even on my own computer.
Yeah, mine, too. I can definitely look into, I mean, if we're looking at a cost of $25,000 for the villas. And Mayor, was that for a changing it to a different lawn or changing it to a native landscape?
It's for, well, in our situation, what we're trying to do is both the front and the back, right? So that's essentially the yard, but it's drought-resistant native landscape with, you know, not, not completely, you know, like a rock garden or things like that, but.
A mix of the two.
A mix of the two. Obviously, that cost will vary depending on the design and the services you use. But that's the kind of the ballpark of what we got a couple of those. It's not a reasonable, you know, and that's partially because labor and construction cost, you know, especially for like the metal sort of sheeting that, you know, bears is pretty high right now. So, you know, this, this doesn't impact our decision, you know, too much. But the rebate is kind of a drop in the bucket, at least the current rebate is, you know, compared to, you know.
What if you just changed out your grass? And, you know.
That would probably be a little cheaper because you can probably bring a sod cutter in and then you can lay sod. So it has a little bit less labor work to it.
Right. Versus building new beds and such.
Yeah, that's going to be a lot more labor-intensive and have a little bit more stuff associated with it.
And that would be, I think that would be fairly huge.
Yeah.
From a savings standpoint, so.
Councilor Young?
Just a couple of quick comments. One, I think this is another place where education of the citizens is going to be really important so that first they know about these things. And then, you know, have more information to decide whether to do them. And the second thing is, I think it's going to be really interesting to track these things and see who's doing what. Because I think a lot of the things on this, this list of things that they could do are going to be, like solar is like well-known. Lots of people are doing solar, it's been around for a while. A lot of these other things are going to be, it's first going to be just the first few early adopters, right? And it's going to take a while to catch on. So I don't think we should be impatient about, about people not adopting these things right away. But by tracking it, we can also say who's doing what and have more information about, should we raise subsidies here or should we lower subsidies here? So I'd really like to see that as a, as a part of this whole plan is we're going to track all this.
And I think that's kind of what I was alluding to during the water, this water rate, utility rate discussion, is I talked about having like a cycle of where we're like, we adopt new, we have water rates, but we also have water conservation. And we're kind of looking and reevaluating those programs annually around July or so so we can make sure we budget correctly going into that. Or maybe it's earlier, but we can kind of discuss that. But making sure we are tracking and evaluating how effective these are, you know, what we could do better or what we could, you know, change.
I think it's also going to be really interesting to talk to the early adopters for these things. Like who, the first few people who dream, do rainwater harvesting. How is it working for them?
Yeah, I think that would be very beneficial to see who signs up and who's wanting to do these things. I did have a question. Does the, this is regarding the Sunset Valley meadows. Does the meadows allow, would they be allowing rainwater harvesting tanks?
Right now, they do barrels, but we have brought this up to them. And I think they're very open to it. But, you know, it would require some change and such, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to echo Councilor Young's point, I think one education is just the availability of not only the city rebates, but also the city of Austin rebates as water customers. Because I don't think that gets enough attention and just point in fact, you know, just having this listed side by side is really helpful. And using that on the websites or the promotional material just to let people know that they have available access to additional beyond our city entity resources. I think it's well-known for solar, like you said, that you can get a rebate from, you know, the tax rebate and the city rebate. And even Austin Energy, you know, provides a rebate. But Austin Water rebates is really, really helpful to put in people's context. Melissa, did you want to speak again?
Thank you, Mayor Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Reitz. I just remembered when we started doing solar, how companies would come in and say, it's all free to do your solar and you should just, you know, sign up with my company. And so it just gave me pause, it gave me pause in the meeting, but it's come up again for me, that when we say we're doing 100% of things, sometimes you, it becomes an inflationary thing for when people figure out that they can do that. So I'm just saying, if I had a company and I knew that I was going to get 100% paid for and I could tell my guy, hey, you should do this because it's totally paid for. And there are companies that do this when they find this, then the prices go up. So I guess I would like some sort of price check on the things that we do 100% of when we're going to do programs like that, just where we know what the baseline is comparably. So it's not that I don't want to do 100% because I think as PNE did, it's a good idea to do it. But I just want to see how we might be able to say, this is the current price and we're offering 100% of this current price rather than the inflationary aspects that can come in when a company will say, this is totally paid for, so it doesn't matter how much you do. And here's, here's the price and then we're on the hook for whatever the price is. So I just want some sort of control. I don't know, but that's just my thought. So thank y'all, thank y'all for this consideration. Y'all are doing a great job.
Councilor Medicas?
Yeah, I think we could do, do that research on what is the going rate for that kind of service and then do up to, maybe that's the language that we use. And then I love the idea of following up with people that have implemented any of these things. And I think it'd be kind of cool, like we did the workshop on rainwater collection, is to maybe gather some of the residents that have done it. Because I know I've had the experience with barrels and it's mind-boggling. So I would do, I want to do something totally different. Because you have to use the water and they get all clogged anyway. It's a mess to clean.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work. But it'd be cool to have like residents that have done this and had experience to come and invite other residents to hear the pros and cons. You know, what worked, what didn't work, what would I do differently?
All right. Any further discussion on this item? So what, Caroline mentioned we would be bringing this back as part of the rate adoption or the, you know, the adoption of, yeah, of the rebate schedule for the budget. So we'd have another chance at looking at these numbers and getting some feedback from residents as well. Councilor Rosengard?
Is any of this already in the budget for this 2024?
The money's been set aside, I guess it's in committed funds now.
No, a million dollars.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as Caroline alluded to, so we have a, now we have a codified conservation rebate program. So, you know, these will have to be codified in chapter 42.
All right. Well, thanks, Council, for the discussion on this item. And thank you again, Councilor Reitz, for the initiative last year when we were setting up some more aggressive rebates for water conservation. We all know that we're not, it's come in and it's to many extents here. With that, Council, we are done with our agenda items and we can adjourn if somebody wants to make a motion to do so?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Councilor Young, is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we adjourn at 8:39 PM.